Buenos días. Buenos días. Estamos preparados para la reunión del Consejo Municipal, son las ocho y media aproximadamente. Parece que tenemos siete, ocho miembros presentes. Sin embargo, estamos diez presentes. ¿Quién quiere abrazar el tema de...? Por favor, pasar a prestarle un...
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to City Hall, welcome to Council.
Buenos días a todos, bienvenidos a la sala de la Unión. También bienvenidos a la reunión del Consejo Municipal de Los Ángeles, hoy es martes veintinueve de abril dos mil tres. El Consejo Municipal normalmente se reúne todos los martes, miércoles y viernes a las diez de la mañana. Sin embargo, es una reunión especial del Consejo Municipal, especial en sentido de vista que nos estamos reuniendo una hora especial y es aproximadamente las ocho cuarenta de la mañana. Tenemos una agenda especial para consideración esta mañana antes de también tener una reunión regular del Consejo Municipal que se iban a acabar las diez de la mañana actual, yo tome lista. Diez miembros presentes en forma completa, señor presidente, gracias, ya que este es martes, es la primera reunión de la semana. Sir, no much, me está recuerdo que estamos, un saludo a la bandera. Sar gente, por favor, pase. Run, pase, por favor. Miembros, pónganse de pie para soltar la bandera. Es una agenda especial que tiene un asunto y es una consideración, cotección de la... El comité de regulación. Miembros para hablar sobre el punto de vista donde finalizamos la semana pasada, el CLA, le quiero pedir al CLA que de nuevo inicie el diálogo. Miraremos un diagrama que hemos estado utilizando, hay varias recomendaciones y propuestas que se ha presentado el Consejo Municipal para consideración de parte de la Comisión de Ética, creo yo que se van a cabo cuatro audiencias sobre sus propuestas y yo les acabo. En el comité intergubernamental de relaciones ahora tenemos el paquete de comisión ética, el reporte de los reglamentos, el cual es un poco diferente a las recomendaciones de la comisión, también tenemos posiciones y recomendaciones por ambos, la Fiscalía Municipal y la Fiscalía también con el CLA. Por lo tanto, para ayudarnos y guiarnos de lo que queda de las recomendaciones tenemos que hablar sobre asuntos dos hasta diez. Cual el uno tiene diferentes factores, por lo tanto, señor Dean. Tienen un diagrama ante ustedes con la fecha de cuatro veintinueve cero tres. Lo hemos actualizado. Hacia la mano derecha para las acciones que han tomado en los asuntos previos a la última reunión es sobre esto y estamos hoy en la página uno. Esto es un grupo de recomendaciones bastante complicados, creo yo que nos ayudará, también tiene un diagrama y otro. La comisión explicará su intención en términos generales, pues hablaremos precisamente sobre uno A, uno B, etcétera. Muchas gracias, Liam Powell, con la Comisión de Ética, Palencia, Consejales, recordarán que hace dos cuantas reuniones ya han decidido que individuos personas, grupos, quienes vienen a cabo gastos bastante, de gran cantidad tienen que presentar una declaración durante cuatro horas a la Comisión de Ética de si estos son los gastos independientes están en contra de un candidato para una posición pública. Este diagrama que la oficina CLA preparó con la fecha del veinte ocho de abril es una manera constructiva para repasar los elementos de las propuestas de la comisión sin hablar detalladamente sobre estos propuestas, solamente queremos asegurar que todos estamos en la misma, al mismo nivel. La primera pregunta ante ustedes es, esencialmente, si sí, basando en la presentación de los que hacen gastos independientes bastante grandes. Deben tener una habilidad los candidatos para responder igualmente tal como provee la ley actual. Y si la respuesta a esta pregunta sí que debemos de proveer mejor respuesta en nuestra recomendación, nuestro punto de vista para candidatos para conjugar los mismos fondos, qué tipo de respuesta debemos de llevar a cabo el diagrama del CRA, muestra los componentes que la Comisión Ética propuesto que toma empate esta respuesta. Quiero brevemente repasar estos con ustedes. El diagrama a la mano es que demuestra las propuestas de la comisión y también habla acerca de los asuntos específicos y los cuales utilizan para llegar a esto y esto habla sobre sesión, esta recomendación y si esta respuesta aplica sobre un ambiente general o específico, la respuesta también, eso que llamamos la respuesta de fondos que conjugan en términos más sencillos. Es una propuesta que cuando un candidato con fondos que conjugan y se iban a cabo gastos independientes, este candidato se le debe proveer, este candidato con una fórmula acelerada para llegar a la cantidad máxima disponible en fondos públicos que se permite bajo la ley de saludar a ellos. Debe haber una respuesta de fondos que conjugan para que ayudarles a llegar a lo máximo rápidamente, pensé que puedan tener fondos para utilizar rápidamente. Prefirmos esto a una tasa de tres a uno, esto es una recomendación que hemos hecho para elecciones primarias. Esto ocurrería, ustedes ponen la segunda columna, cuando otros eventos ocurran, por ejemplo, en una campaña de Consejo Municipal ocurrería una aceleración de proveer estos fondos para, independientes para apoyar a sus oponentes, llegar a cincuenta millones de euros en recomendación que esto ocurre en la primaria y también en la general. Todo esto es un paso moderado, hablaremos pues, el punto debe de ver. Otra respuesta que es parte de estos elementos sí es los límites de gastos debe ser excluidos. Aparte de cómo se excluyen actualmente, recuerdan cuando hay una campaña de Consejo, cuando gastos independientes en su totalidad llegan a cincuenta millones por uno y para todos los candidatos combinados. Los gastos de, para un candidato particular en esta campaña entonces se levantan estos límites. La propuesta de hablar así esto no debe de ser, precisamente para los que no se benefician de los gastos independientes deben tener sus límites de gastos excluidos mientras los candidatos que han beneficiado del gasto elevado debe de continuar. Debe de aplicarse esto para todos o para ninguno, para los que se benefician de este tercer elemento, se fusionan los límites de contribución deben de ser aumentados en ciertas circunstancias y lo que yo quiero mencionar aquí es de que es una respuesta que como la comisión ha propuesto aplicará en circunstancias más limitadas, pero que las cantidades de cuando los límites de contribución serán excluidos sería cuando gastos independientes para apoyar un candidato en particular lleguen a cien mil dólares, por lo tanto, doble la cantidad que estamos considerando para el límite de gastos, pero la pregunta que es, debemos distinguir y permitir a los que no son apoyados por gastos independientes o los que son un blanco de gastos independientes negativos tener una respuesta que es diferente de la ley actual, debemos permitirles a ellos aumentar límites de contribución más elevados de cantidades normales, mucho la persona que ha beneficiado, quien ha sido apoyado por esas cantidades altas de EIR deben de tener la misma límites de gastos tal como están en la ley actual. Hay algo adicionales aquí en cuanto a respuestas a casos independientes en un asunto aparte del cual aún permanece bajo diálogo, hay cierto desacuerdo sobre esto pero es como, y si uno en una elección general los candidatos deben recibir una cantidad más alta de lo que actualmente reciben en la ley actual, si llega a una elección general la ley le permite recibir un sexto en la cantidad máxima disponible para ayudar a iniciar su campaña porque es un plazo de tiempo bastante apresurado para su campaña, porque esta comisión tiene un nuevo que no tiene que ver con gastos independientes pero solamente le ayudarán los candidatos a enfocarse para hablar con votantes más pronto que después es de aumentar la cantidad de ese fondos, es para tratar con los asuntos independientes tal como. ¿Debe de ser una respuesta que es diferente de la ley actual? Para transmitir a candidatos con los fondos. Que me junterán en una campaña y que respuesta tiene que ser de ese. Un paso acelerado, límites de contribución y los gastos, los límites, los gastos deben ser iguales a los que actualmente están. ¿Quiere agregar algo? Propuesta uno A, asunto uno, es de apresurar fondos a una tasa tres por uno para candidatos que no se beneficien. Si hay un gasto independiente de doscientos mil dólares en la campaña de alcaldía entonces los fondos para las personas que no se beneficiarán de este, los gastos independientes tendrán los fondos cambiados a tres a uno desde la actual, la Fiscalía Municipal no tiene problema con esta propuesta. El comité de reglas y elecciones ha modificado la orden con la elección primaria de tres a uno pero aumentándolo tres a uno en la general. Y la oficina de la alcaldía está en contra de fondos tres a uno en la primaria y después en la general, de posiciones de adoptar el reporte de reglamentos y de elecciones. Carmel Sella, la oficina de la alcaldía, para crear la posición de la alcaldía que se apoya, apresura los fondos este personalmente a la elección general para cero en la primaria presente. Asuntos únicos y muy, de un gran reto mientras reconocemos las metas de esta propuesta y tiene y baja buena situación resultará en varios consecuencias. Por ejemplo, hay una primaria bastante competitiva donde ningún candidato va a ser el ganador. Candidato A, candidato A. Preferiría enfrentarse con una candidata más débil en la elección, candidato C, entonces los que apoyan a candidato A hacen todo lo posible para promover fomentar a candidato C para que así en la elección general se lleve a cabo entre el candidato A y candidato B bajo esta propuesta el beneficiario en gasto independiente legalmente y actualmente es el candidato C pero quién por hecho es el partido que está haciendo beneficio bajo esta propuesta, candidato A que le compuso a otro beneficiante por tener un oponente más débil lleva fondos acelerados en una base de tres a uno, candidato B quien ha sido, es que lo de la campaña. Ha sido, ha sido una gran dificultad en cuanto a quién es el candidato que se beneficiará y ve estas veces. Pueden imaginarse diferentes ejemplos por diferentes candidatos en la primaria, están utilizando esta herramienta, el cual puede ser efectivo pero utilizando con múltiples. Candidatos no funcionan en una primaria quien está haciendo que en cuanto a gastos independientes, por ejemplo, los apoyadores de candidato A ellos les gustaría que candidato A se enfrentara con candidato C, que es el que tiene el candidato más entonces en el curso normal, quizás candidato B se enfrentaría a candidato A. Elección general le hacen lo posible para apoyar a candidato C para que así conlleguen a elección general, entonces precisamente ellos piden un gasto independiente C, los que, lo que dicen, los IEs hacen todo posible para apoyar para C. Gastos independientes se parte el candidato C cuando llegan su declaración, claro, por escrito con la comisión está diciendo yo estoy gastando gastos independientes se parte el candidato C y como resultado candidato A se beneficia teniendo el impacto de los IEs para promover a candidato C y de demás candidato A se beneficia de nuevo teniendo fondos acelerados, por lo tanto, este es un ejemplo para mostrar que teniendo múltiples candidatos es muy difícil definir quiénes son los candidatos que se beneficiarán y quiénes no serán además. Otro ejemplo, creo que la suposición es que al otorgar fondos acelerados esto le ayuda al candidato que no está beneficiando de un gasto independiente que esté llegando de una vez el que no recibe los gastos dependientes por lo que podría ocurrir si esto se lleva a cabo en la primaria desde que esta cantidad se siente más presión en otro candidato que no son menos competentes. Menos competencia y esto, excluyendo a los candidatos, ambos de los cantos que han recibido los IEs y los candidatos que han recibido una elevación, esto es, aún no apoyamos la meta de incluir los IEs pero creemos que ese es el, la herramienta correcta dentro de este. Señor Wise. De acuerdo al diagrama tenemos un recordatorio. Uno A, elemento uno. Buenas razones son es tratar de proteger lo más posible de la tesorería pública. Esta es nuestra versión de finanzas económicas públicas, así que esto principalmente para elección general, esto fue la intención de esta moción. En particular, Pedro, yo creo que lo que queremos, de lo que queremos hablar aquí es, el ejemplo posible de una elección primaria de dos candidatos, que solamente dos candidatos se postulan, debemos de aplicar estos reglamentos en primarias en estos ejemplos porque si solamente hay dos candidatos en una primaria no habrá una elección general, uno de los dos candidatos logrará cincuenta por ciento más entre sus colegas, una moción de cambio. Sí, pide este fondo acelerado tres a uno llegando a la primaria y que estas herramientas sí, las implimimos como herramientas adecuadas para desintervisar a casos independientes que expliquen solamente en elecciones generales y mantener la tesorería pública lo más posible pero quizás el CLA, Comisión Ética, Fiscalía pueden comentar sobre la posibilidad de tener, de hacer que esto se aplique en la primaria en caso de que solamente haya dos candidatos. Esto fue un cambio, una moción, un cambio, los tres E. En estas situaciones de elección general, en eventos de casos independientes, lo que escucharemos en parte en cuanto a respuestas, es que no es más o menos gastoso porque la tasa acelerada es, aún la tasa acelerada, el máximo de cien mil dólares, o quizás esto cambie bajo los ejemplos de que solamente es una manera más apresurada de llegar a esa máxima pero creo yo que entre uno a uno es muy agresivo, un incentivo bastante agresivo y un premio para candidatos que participan en ese programa que se le cuelguen los límites de los gastos y tiene propósito de que estén tratando de lograr recursos accionales a los candidatos que nos ofrecieran para poder competir con el ejemplo de gastos independientes, por lo tanto, esta fue la intención de los mociones de los cambios, usted también recordarán que los diferentes componentes de uno A dice nuestro nivel de comunidad tratando candidatos que no se beneficiarán de manera diferente que los candidatos que no se beneficiarán bajo gastos independientes, esto es lo principal del Parte de la Fiscalía, yo les preocupasé que la legalidad de cosas a los diferentes posiciones bajos en todo el programa. En la primaria solo tienen dos candidatos, creo yo que esto, llegar a una elección general debe ser este cambio para que esto sea incluido como elección general solamente, entonces creo yo que nuestra respuesta es que la idea que va bastante concreta de cómo se llevará a cabo en la primaria no va a estar bien basado en nuestro punto de vista, es su punto de vista de que esto no va a existir muy lejos de lo que actualmente existe en nuestro punto de vista que no es algo ambiguo para los votantes cuando
tan importante tomar este paso para mejorar la paz explosiva de dinero de partidos con intereses especiales que al hacer esto quiero que lo hagamos con los ojos abiertos y no quiero pretender que a la probar esta propuesta resolveremos ese problema o se termine ese problema en cierto punto que estamos haciendo aquí estamos luchando la última batalla de la última guerra y cuando hacemos esto se crean problemas en el futuro y creo yo que todavía necesitamos reconocer esto con los ojos abiertos por eso que presenté una enmienda el cual se ha distribuido esto este tratado está prevenido a la siguiente batalla sobre dinero esfuerzos de ciertos tipos de dinero que no precisamente están produciendo una campaña o esas son la promoción cuando vamos a esta propuesta que estamos subiendo esta propuesta de la comisión ética si la construye uno ellos vendrán y como resultado tenemos que tener al mínimo información sobre dinero que será incluido sobre promoción de la ley estatal y por tanto en tal provisión que en funk tiene la promoción mi moción uno de f le pide a la fiscalía que escriba en memorando la nueva ordenanza para ser lucen basando en las provisiones de declaración bajo la ley estatal y por tanto que estas ciudades sepan cuando dinero de interés especial pide influenciar una elección a través de una campaña de promoción la propuesta concorda con uno a con uno b o lo que ustedes opten hacer colegas y optan a apoyar la propuesta de la comisión ética o si por razón ilegal les optan no apoya el uno f se concordará con su posición de cualquier manera hagan lo que hagan sobre la propuesta de la comisión que les pido que no solamente se enfoquen en la última batalla pero que se enfoquen la siguiente batalla y apoyen nuestros esfuerzos ahí también gracias a todos ustedes también aquí en la mesa por sus grandes esfuerzos de que muchas personas están sentadas aquí en la mesa están de acuerdo que estarán desacuerdo pero gracias por sus argumentos
dos sugerencias tu cante a la moción
la idea es un idea bastante importante como fue de caso de estos maratón tenemos que estar un paso adelante del candidato que será el que se postulara para la moción hace referencia es que de regular campañas de publicidad de candidatos la moción cuando uno mira la la moción esto es bastante claro que la intención de esta moción es solamente para no es para reglas sino solamente para moción para declarar esta intención que solo es que por lo tanto es sencillamente es requerida a nivel municipal el tipo de declaración que se requiere a nivel estatal y que se requerirá también a nivel federal por lo tanto si queremos poner un título a esta moción declaración de campaña de publicidad para que no haya ninguna confusión con mucho gusto suyo que tenga ese título y la segunda pregunta si usted previamente ha indicado la intención de que la comisión ética estudie el pacto de campaña de publicidad durante la siguiente elección municipal y supongo que dentro de esta moción alguna repetición habrá una petición que la comisión estudie el pacto de campaña de publicidad claro el futuro me quedaría tener este estamos tener este estudio estamos esperando para llevar con esta legislación y si no lo íbamos a acabar esto en mi punto de vista va a ser un paquete en papel es muy importante por tanto que si la comisión ética opta estudiado todos podemos iniciarnos esto en el futuro también muchas gracias señor presidente repasando uno a tengo tres dudas parece que al repasar uno a casi es imposible particularmente se hay múltiple candidatos en una primaria para daros cuenta que si beneficiarían creo que esto es pura especulación tendrán diferentes personas que llegaran diferentes camiones pero un alguien someter a una persona de primera quince años benefactor dos aunque hemos identificaremos no candidatos y casos independientes y por definición parece que hay una gran diferencia que el candidato un candidato está controlándolo porque ahora queremos apresurar pago para los que no se beneficiaron cuando la persona que usted pensaron que era benefactor quizás no tuvo involucración quisiste elevación de máximo quizás no se consideraron que o se beneficiaron lo hicieron en terceros el asunto de el tres a uno diez a uno cinco uno esto no es igual al por qué hay una igualdad a tres a uno si esto ayudará a la persona a todas vías pero tanto esto es un conflicto de asuntos basado en un campo temprano donde dice que alguien tiene el beneficio de determinar benefactor no creo que esto se puede ser especialmente en campañas en elecciones de un con múltiple candidatos simplemente en primaria pero en lo general será más fácil pero casi sería imposible cuando se ven a cabo cuando haga siete o cuatro candidatos así que no será no será benefactor eso son los tres asuntos que me concierne la pregunta que usted hizo sobre la afirmación sobre quién se beneficiará algo que lo concibe que quizás alguien jugará con sistema algo que quiero ofrecer es cuando consideramos el sistema actual que tenemos y nos conciена acerca de grupos o individuos o personas que jugará con este sistema creo que será mucho que ser mucho más que esto ocurra ahora ahora alguien que apoya que quiere apoyar a un amigo que se está posiblando para una elección puede puede ser una gasto independiente de 50 mil dólares y esto levanta los gastos independientes solamente recibirán beneficios 50 mil pero también el beneficio de que se llevará o se excluirá solamente este gasto este juego pero tanto se llegará a ser una propuesta con más riesgo y tendrá que gastar 50 mil dólares para apoyar al candidato de su amigo para que si su amigo tenga el beneficio de algo que quiero ofrecer lo que me quiera que le conciена acerca de juegos mucho más difícil bajo la propuesta que va con el sistema actual en cuanto a nuestros casos independientes y esta respuesta no hay una suposición en nuestra recomendación que hay coordinación estamos analizando los efectos de estos casos independientes en diferentes candidatos y en las campañas que se han visto y en cuanto a la teoría de tres a uno tenemos varios proyecciones que hacemos al analizar hasta qué punto podemos acelerar la fórmula de fondos dentro de la experiencia que hemos planteado otras veces quizás un poco no muy fundado pero puede ser tres a uno se encontró si no fue a nivel que parece que pudo subir el punto de vista de asistir mientras aún mantenerse metas bajolentes actuales del fondo financiero una de las preguntas estamos dirigiendo esto estamos dirigiendo esto hacia alguna campaña en particular a un asunto general tratando de corregirlo en cuanto al exceso esto es un asunto general esto es un asunto que está creciendo general hemos visto que límites los gastos de límites de gastos han sido excluidos y cuando miramos la visión de gastos definitivamente como más circularmente están exigiendo límites de gastos por el volumen que se está viendo los gastos en campañas independientes es un problema bastante común gracias señor presidente colegas esto es tiempo es tiempo de tenemos una campaña en marzo donde los que gastan independientemente ese ciento por ciento más de lo que fue hace dos años mil por ciento más de lo que fue hace seis está creciendo presionó acción hoy si no actuamos hoy será incapacidad de actuar es por ahora creo que hay diferentes áreas de desacuerdo uno el punto de vista de la fiscalía yo estoy de acuerdo no creo que perderemos si estamos de acuerdo ahora con el consejo que nos han dado tenemos acciones legadas gratis y no hay nadie que está listo para demandar no tenemos nada que perder hay muchísimo que ganar procediendo con esto y haciendo agresivamente esto no limita es una oportunidad muchas personas a iniciarse en el campo político pero esta es una oportunidad real que no podemos escribir creo que tenemos que tener fondos públicos más temprano tengo que confiar a la comisión sobre el asunto de solvencia aunque creo yo que en el futuro tenemos que considerar confianza pues mismo en tres nos dirigimos hacia tener un exo más elevado y crear un máximo que en el futuro esto de hacerlo es algo que si Arizona pudo hacer el cual es un estado muy conservativo y cuál se inicia impuestos propios de infacción nosotros también lo hemos dialogado hemos trabajado y hemos demorado demorado porque queríamos saber de lo que estamos hablando ahora creo que ya sabemos de lo que estamos hablando es el día de actuar es el momento de aprobar esto tenemos acuerdo y el principal de esto creo yo pero no hay que tener diferencia que las diferencias en detalles lleguen al momento de que esto nos iba a acabar sea un veto o sobrevivir a un veto creo que todos podemos respetar nuestro fin aquí para estar de acuerdo que estemos en desacuerdo en cierto detalle espero que segura que esta reforma y se apuntan que sea probada el día de hoy señor lavanch muchas gracias estamos en este reporte quiero hablar a la comisión ética campañas primarias en 92 dólares se gastaron fuera de los datos y en 2003 un millón de dólares más de un millón les fue se gastó esto es un punto bastante por ganar sentido al cual después que yo apoyo este reporte aunque quizás no solucionaré personas aquí pero debemos empezar en el parque pero no siento no tengo dólares tengo dólares hasta más de un millón dólares en diez años parece un poquito exagerados espero que esta reforma tengo una pregunta para la alcaldía la opción de la alcaldía porque sé que la alcaldía ha mencionado su punto de vista sobre ese asunto hay algún compromiso hay una proposición que la comisión ética haga con el alcalde y el luce que todos ganaran y creo yo que podemos dar paso para esto gracias consejal pero esto el alcalde también quiere que todos ganen por esta razón en una carta previa mencionó la punto de vista que la decisión que la pruebe es acelerar este dinero en la elección general en la primaria convencional pero en la primaria qué tal si todos nosotros quisiéramos prestaremos como alcalde todos tenemos que enviar tenemos que nuestro voz se ha escuchado bien esto es un momento que tenemos que tener los fondos adecuados en la primaria para llegar para que todos lleguen hasta el público si hay dos a uno tres a uno en la primaria es por cien si no hay y es tres a uno o cinco uno sea algún tipo de manera para llegar a un alternativa donde todos estaremos de acuerdo y otros estarán sin pensando que creo yo que es adecuado y hacer esto y no es algo malo y malo están los detalles lo que queremos es prevenir que mientras escribimos esta propuesta tenemos que considerar lo que resultaría de esta propuesta por lo tanto señor lavanch usted está considerando la siguiente campaña sus competidores su en conseja el holden y la concejal de usted no desearían enfrentarse con el concejal sabiendo de sus grandes aptitudes y experiencia en la ciudad y mientras usted respeta la concejal por cualquier razón usted piensa que usted le gustaría que fuera la persona que le fuera su oponente lo que hace ustedes se apoyan y por lo tanto nosotros suponemos al concejal holden nos ponemos en contra del concejal holden y hay otros y otros diferentes de correa en contra del concejal holden el resultado es de que usted recibirá fondos acelerados tal como su competidor o concejal pero tanto ustedes han logrado consiguiendo al oponente que usted había recibido fondos adicionales tal como usted lo ha hecho y concejal holden por hecho es el que se beneficiará de los gastos independientes y por lo tanto el sistema ahora ha sido manipulado aunque estamos tratando de hablar acerca del ies completamente ha sido excluido como resultado gracias esto es algo muy serio yo he visto acerca de las situaciones que yo presiono lo que le concienna al alcalde creo que todos podemos pensar en que cosas bueno cosas que pueden correr creemos que tenemos que tomar un paso para decirle al público que estamos tratando de mejorar confianza pública aún si inicialmente hay diferentes diálogos de lo que podría ocurrir pero creo que una de las cosas más importantes que debemos de considerar es que estos deben de ser casos independientes de nuevo independientes la clave la clave todos sabemos que por hecho quizás no son solamente alguna manera u otra porque en su ejemplo es el hecho que haya apoyan ya saben que tienes handes en la mejor condado para posibles en contra de esta misma también sobre esta información desde en eso creo yo que estos casos independientes pero tanto entiendo que esto es algo que considero pero yo creo seriamente que el crecimiento en los gastos independientes ha sido muy muy elevado que tenemos que hacer algo tenemos que quien no continúa creciendo estos gastos independientes que influencian a nuestras campañas y otros en los toca que si las personas pueden competir y todos pueden ser sobre todo nuestras propias experiencias y miramos cómo es que esto influenció mi campaña o hubiera podido hacer mi elección más difícil para alguien más que es un candidato nuevo y creo yo que muchos nosotros queremos asegurar que tenemos el proceso más abierto y democrático y no darle ni un beneficio otro beneficio otro gracias por lo que usted ha mencionado el día de hoy eso no va a ser para siempre creo yo que si tenemos la experiencia donde por hecho hay cierta corrupción y diferentes cosas que hemos hablado previamente el asunto de perjuicio y quién es tratando de utilizar y si usted mira la cantidad de dinero que se requiere para que sus límites sean los 50 mil 100 mil 200 mil en ciertas maneras 100 200 y 500 mil esto es una gran cantidad de dinero para que personas inviertan creo que todos también puedo mandar un mensaje como candidato es cuando nos postulen los no queremos gastos independientes ustedes que quizás sean mis amigos si me dicen quieren apoyarme hagan permiten hacer dinero quiero ganar yo derecho de ponerme aquí de pie como concejal sin gastos independientes quiero recoger fondos que recoger los fondos hasta los límites que tenemos actualmente hacerlo de esta manera tratar de mandar un mensaje bastante alto nuestros apoyadores porque si somos sus patrocinadores no queremos que gasten gastos independientes nosotros es cuando no queremos que esto ocurra creo yo que podemos hacerlo como oficiales elegidos o como posibles candidatos pero otros puestos públicos cuando blacer los límites de contribución y de gastos que esto sea elevado qué quiere decir esto en realidad económicamente qué significa esto hablamos acerca del qué es lo que quiere decir económicamente para los candidatos para los candidatos que no se beneficiaron si usted es un candidato que no se beneficia si no iba a otra propuesta gastos independientes llegan a estos 50 mil dólares para apoyar a su oponente usted ya no será atado a sus límites de gastos entonces usted no tendrá que tener un límite de 380 mil dólares de gastos puede gastar libremente no importa en cuanto puede recoger es en cuanto puede gastar entonces en lo de contribución por esta contribución la manera como funcionista estoy llegando a estos 50 mil dólares cuando yo ocurra usted como el candidato que no fue apoyado por los ies puede volver a recoger contribuciones más allá de los límites normales hasta la cantidad incluida en el mandato esencialmente es igual a un candidato pero esto es no es una cantidad sin límite que los límites de contribución se excluyan estos mil dólares prohibidos en realidad de a un estante los 500 mil y mil esto es un punto muy importante es no debe ser elevado completamente serán elevados pero no se han excluido completamente como los límites de gastos y de nuevo esto ocurre solamente cuando gastos independientes son más elevados como si me doy hacen una campaña de consumismo pero tanto debe ser una cantidad más limitante de gastos independientes antes de que estos límites de contribución se excluyan hay una norma peste que debe lograrse antes de que estos límites de contribución sean elevados
yo estoy escuchando un mensaje doble hoy sé quiero mencionar sus nombres candidatos que corren para el cargo y dicen bueno solo razona todo el dinero que puedas para mí porque van a romper el límite y yo voy a poder usarlo ahora ven sé que algunos de mis colegas están hablando de establecer un límite aquí porque es lo correcto que hacer en este momento nunca han llevado una campaña en su vida dicen dónde ir, a dónde hablar, cómo razonar el dinero pero desde el punto de vista de la estrategia no saben nada de ello en absoluto señor bicheko más de 400 mil dólares se gastaron en su expenditures independientes probablemente más de lo que no se declaró si le dieras 100 a uno tres días antes de la elección todavía perdería porque no tendría suficiente tiempo para incorporar ese dinero a su campaña para hacer un nivel de juego así de lo que estamos hablando ahora tienes que tener una fecha de corte y yo proponía que tres semanas antes de la elección no puedes contribuir a ningún dinero para los expenditures independientes y cuando declaras que puedes contribuir en ese momento entonces claro podrías tener 3 a 1, 10 a 1, lo que sea retroactivamente para nivelar el juego si eso es lo que realmente quieres hacer y luego el candidato B que no es el receptor de los expenditures independientes entonces tendrá suficiente tiempo para incorporar ese dinero a su campaña y llevar un efectivo de campaña ahora qué pasa con eso qué pasa con eso lo siento por favor qué pasa con eso es que el candidato A el receptor de los expenditures independientes puede que ese expenditure no sea inclusivo en la campaña hasta el punto donde realmente puede ganar es una táctica diversionaria es un expenditure independiente para el candidato A por lo tanto el candidato B puede razonar dinero para compensar lo que el candidato A ha hecho y luego el candidato A no está beneficiando porque solo claudió el asunto y por lo tanto el candidato A perdería y ese era el intento en primer lugar o nivelar el juego que es el intento si es un intento legítimo dar el dinero al candidato A y hacer un impacto en el resultado de la elección para el candidato A entonces claro el candidato B necesita ese dinero y suficiente tiempo para ser competitivo así que estamos entre la piedra y el lugar duro me gustaría reducir la cantidad de dinero de 50.000 a 25.000 en medio hasta el jefe 100.000 y luego tener una fecha de corte para los expenditures independientes tres semanas antes de la elección puede responder a eso
señor presidente podría responder a la última parte
alguien puede mantener mi tiempo
la segunda parte de su propuesta que sería un límite de tiempo para cuando alguien puede hacer un expenditure independiente ha sido expresamente desaprobado por la corte supremis y no seríamos capaces de hacerlo porque los límites de expenditures independientes son protegidos por la primera enmienda y comenzando con Buckley versus Vallejo la corte supremis ha dicho y ha continuado de decir que los expenditures independientes no abordan un interés gubernamental atractivo de corrupción o apariencia de corrupción porque los expenditures independientes son necesariamente independientes de un candidato por lo tanto habría significado
entonces estamos desperdiciando nuestro tiempo no hay nada que podemos hacer aquí para compensar lo que la corte ya ha hecho y eso es lo que estamos tratando de hacer estamos tratando de cerrar el vacío nunca vas a poder hacerlo todo y es un desperdicio de tiempo nunca nivelar el juego lo que será será dejar que la gente dé el 500 dólares máximo y luego vaya a la pista no puedes arreglarlo
señor presidente solo agregaría que en respuesta a su pregunta sobre si los límites deberían ser reducidos antes de que estos eventos antes de que estos respuestas ocurran miramos eso y nuestra opinión era que no quieres poner tan bajo el nivel que estas respuestas golpean todo el tiempo hay que haber algún nivel significativo de gasto antes de que estas respuestas ocurran pero creo que tienes razón en la medida en que no hay manera de que ninguna respuesta de fondos correspondiente ninguna de estas respuestas jamás compluya el número ilimitado de dinero que puede gastarse a través de los expenditures independientes pero eso va a volver a la idea de la señora Parks que no estamos tratando de resolver el problema que son solo una o dos instancias estamos realmente tratando de lidiar con un tipo general de problema que vemos y no solo las una o dos incidencias donde los expenditures independientes han estado fuera de los grados
entonces nunca vas a volver aquí el próximo año tratando de hacer lo mismo porque nunca vas a arreglar el problema porque vas a tener un estrategista haciendo solo eso no obstante lo que dicen estos tipos que saben tanto sobre la campaña un estrategista decidiendo quién va a ganar y termino dando un ejemplo claro que había un tipo llamado Gray Davis corriendo para el gobernador había un tipo llamado Simon corriendo para el gobernador había un tipo llamado Dick Riordan y todos nos gusta Dick Riordan corriendo para el gobernador qué pasó en la primaria Gray Davis gastó su dinero su dinero contra Dick Riordan para que pudiera tener a Simon como candidato nunca vas a arreglar el problema y los comunes no dicen una palabra sobre eso porque Gray Davis era ese candidato solo es un fraude y sabes que vienes aquí disparando tu boca si vas a disparar tu boca sea justo si es malo para uno es malo para el otro sabes muy bien que fue malo cuando Gray hizo eso pero eso está fuera del punto soy demó pero el hecho de que sigue siendo malo y no puedes corregirlo todo lo que podemos hacer es que has mostrado tu intento y ese es hacer el gobierno lo más limpio posible y apoyamos eso al menos yo lo hago si pudieran arreglar el problema de tener una fecha de corte para los expenditures independientes sería ideal pero la corte dijo que no podía hacerlo estaba preparado para presentar ese movimiento incluso reducir la cantidad de dinero pero si no puedo hacerlo ¿qué puedo hacer? deja eso de lado porque ellos saben de qué estoy hablando gracias señor holden
señor presidente colegas fui la persona que hizo estas preguntas donde campañas previas donde este asunto ha sido un problema ha habido un problema con resultados algo específico quizás que yo pueda pero ahorita siento que estamos hablando sobre este diálogo teórico especulativo alguna campaña específica quizás pueda yo considerar y así que por casos independientes el problema fue iniciado y por lo tanto el pasado hay algún sí 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 por primera vez el cual tiene la intención de beneficiarse de los fondos públicos. Que ese tipo de sistema con gastos independientes extraordinarios hacen, pero usted quizás la hace pensar yo no me posicionaré, yo me excluiré, o voy a tener un... Va a ser más difícil porque la cantidad no tendrá mil. Entonces de que ese sistema por este gran gasto de independiente si esto está amenazando a excluir, amenazando a excluir las voces de los que quizás sí se hubieran postulado. Entonces nos conciene acá el dinámico, lo que ha ocurrido y la fenomena, la fenómeno de casos independientes y cómo afectados nuestro sistema y que ha mostrado de que esto ha resultado en exitos. Yo entiendo su teoría, no estoy enano, solamente quiero saber si ha habido una experiencia en su teoría en la cual yo pueda considerar para sí saber prácticamente lo que estoy diciendo teóricamente y lo que se está diciendo. Si hay una voz fuerte afuera, haga que otra voz sea más fuerte, no hay problema, yo tengo esta teoría. Pero yo entiendo profundamente la experiencia de materializar como ejemplo que yo creo que lo mejor que puedo decir y que otros pueden incluir. Tuvimos un, cada año después de campañas, hablamos con candidatos acerca de lo que nos conciende cuando estamos luchando los candidatos tal como hicimos en nuestra reforma en la escuela de USC en octubre de 2001. Ellos que ocupan candidatos sienten la necesidad de responder igualmente, pero no pueden, no tienen la habilidad de hacerlo. Durante las cantidades, casos independientes, sienten que sus voces están escuchadas y escuchadas sin la cantidad de dinero que representarán. No va a ser suficiente que yo que sienten la necesidad de recordar fondos muy tempranamente ante lo normal, porque están anticipando que habrá grandes gastos independientes. Y tienen ellos que... Pero es una campaña particular es cuando miramos los, la cantidad de dinero y miramos los diferentes ejemplos de una campaña particular es lo que nos preocupa. Yo creo mi comentario es este, creo yo sinceramente que es... Este es un mal servicio a los candidatos iniciales, la manera que usted decide de... Cuando eso se hace en asunto, no, si usted está en una campaña cuando usted sabe que un candidato a un oponente tendrá bastantes gastos, contribuciones de gastos independientes, un competidor no puede... Competir con esto tal como gastar dinero en, por ejemplo, boletos para enviar si quizás aunque nunca los envíen porque no pueden recordar fondos para sellos. Aún esto va a ser incluido como gasto se la habilidad de preparar, para gastos... Esto está siendo excluido porque no pueden trabajar con una empresa al principio y así estar... Pensarse preparar porque ya se ha considerado como un gasto y ahora ya ha llegado a su nivel de gastos. Es por eso que me...
I forgot your name, I'm sorry. Rene Stotter really pretty much killed that whole idea. I mean, I was really ready to vote for that. You know, you limit people, independent expenditures, two weeks ahead of the election. Then you're really leveling the playing field. But telling someone three days before the election that they now get to raise three times as much, or telling them a week before the election that they now get to raise three times as much, I mean, I don't know.
Councilman, if I may, we shared the excitement for that notion, but obviously, we were having to work within constitutional confines. And the balance that we need to strike is, how do we take a system that's far more broken than any of the hypothetical or possibilities that have been thrown out today? What we know is that the current system has a massive problem that is eroding everything that our voters sought to bring about. And it's not that we have a current system that's working well, and we're looking to tweak it and develop something different. We have a current system that in terms of your question about the pragmatics, we have a current system that candidate after candidate and community activists and voice after voice told us is being eroded by special interest spending. So it's not a hypothetical, it's a reality. And these other hypothetical problems that have been laid out, they're concerns for us as well. But if they arise, there are other ways to move our system in an even further positive direction. So the system now is broken. The question of how we move forward and what other possible problems might develop is something that we'll have ample opportunity over time to consider.
Mr. Burnson.
Yes, first of all, it's unfortunate that we have to be in this debate because the constitutionality of independent expenditure committees, because they've turned the whole upside down.
Primero es muy triste estar en esta posición porque como el comité de gastos independientes es lo que hicieron que todo esto ocurriera. Creo si les quedó ocho primarias, seis primarias y dos generales. Las tres generales nunca he tenido un comité de gasto independiente para mí, pero los hemos tenido, lo he tenido en contra mía. No creo que nunca he tenido, nunca he yo. También tengo que agarrar con los públicos, pero ahora el mundo ha cambiado. Es una desfortuna que no podemos limitar contribuciones de gastos independientes un poco antes de la elección. Pero hay algo que sí podemos tratar de hacer si es que no ha sido incluido. Creo que escuchen cuidosamente esto. No podemos hacer que ellos no hagan contribución entre tres días. Creo que hace tiempo dentro de la elección el IE, que tal si se le requiere que ellos hagan una declaración por escrito. Si se pisan hasta el 3 días antes de esta elección, la cantidad que harán y eso nos dará una habilidad de... No solamente estar en una elección a proceder y contribuir a 50 mil dólares en un IE. Le darán a otro candidato la oportunidad, entonces 50 mil dólares igual a esta, los fondos públicas para ilabrar la competencia. La única manera, única diferencia que tenemos además de esto es que si refirimos declaración por escrito, si refirimos que una declaración por escrito de los nombres de contribuyentes del IE cuando se viene al cabo y deben de informarle a ustedes y al público, para que el público pueda decidir que en los pasos sucederán. Entonces haremos algo para anivlar esta competición y a un nivel de la campaña. La campaña debe ser un reporte semanal acerca de las personas que han contribuido a esta campaña durante este curso. Que no tuvo 10 años en la campaña debe de ser en una base de 44 horas a veces, era un requisito. Debe haber un requisito de 20 días, o la confirmación de un aviso para que ellos piensen hacerlo para cualquier candidato y la cantidad que harán, que otorgarán también. No creo que son la única herramienta que tenemos, sino este caso particular yo vi antes. O un requisito que considerándolo, ellos recibirán 10 mil, 50 mil dólares de gastos y son elegibles para 70 mil dólares de fondos públicos. Les damos 10 veces esa cantidad de esto en un nivel de este juego, además quizás podría utilizarse como una... Algo engañoso, debemos de mirar esto más cuidosamente, si podemos vigilar... Vigilar fechas y límites, no podemos hacer solo consejos personales, jurisdicciones, se ha tratado de hacer esto. Y cada uno ha sido disminuido porque hay, esto es una limitación, la expresión. No es una limitación, solamente es una declaración que usted tiene la intención de hacerlo. Ha sido considerado por el tribunal que esto es una limitación previa. Lo controlamos el sistema actual que tenemos aquí en Los Ángeles, el cual es uno que requiere... Declaración, pero realmente cuantos puede hacer un gasto independiente. Esto está dentro de las leyes, así que no espero un aviso antes de hacerlo, esto no. También requiere que la persona que contribuyó este IE sean nombrados, sean incluidos. El sistema actual no, entonces quizás es algo que debemos corregir porque solamente me fui que el comité americano no sé si está apoyando al candidato. Ah, el público no sabe quién es, pero si ven los nombres de las personas, entonces sabrán. De dónde proviene, que se traza algo que debe de incluirse si se procedemos a darlo como esto, gracias. También a la comisión y gracias a las personas que trabajaron en esto, creo que ustedes tienen problemas bastante difíciles. Es algo, yo reconozco lo que están tratando de hacer, yo no necesariamente estoy de acuerdo con todo, pero aprecio el esfuerzo. Yo no tengo por qué luchar esta batalla porque ya me iré, pero sí me interesan mis colegas, me interesa el futuro de esta ciudad. Es muy importante tratar de obtener este sistema más justo, para que no excluya defensas gastos, pero también no queremos dar una ventaja a personas sin escrupulos que pueden utilizar los recursos de lo cual es... Por lo cual se está haciendo esto. Por lo que tenemos que hacer esto, me gustan, gracias, yo creo sinceramente que debemos de controlar lo que está ocurriendo. Me gusta... Ese es un... Una vela bastante grande que nos está impactando, especialmente cuando vemos la cantidad de votantes que llevan a votar. Este IE sí tiene impacto, mandamos un mensaje como este, con este tipo de recursos que influencian una campaña y que no ha estado funcionando al nivel que otras condiciones tienen. Lo que, el problema aquí es, y creo que la palabra clave es el asunto de primeras medidas, espero que podamos considerar cierto mecanismo, cierta política que nos permitirá establecer este nivel igual de competencia. Porque las personas, este grupo está en lo correcto si en... Algo de imaginación que ya hemos mencionado, por ejemplo, el que... Ese grupo dice que están apoyando a candidato A. Empiezan a entregar correspondencia que entra es contrario, el punto de vista del candidato A. Y ha incluido un mensaje solamente para ayudar a candidato B bajo este engaño. No hay manera de recuperar, especialmente si estos correos llegan dos o tres días antes del voto. Cómo controlar esto no lo sé, espero que nosotros podamos encontrar cierto mecanismos. Pero aún si el candidato... Esta es la ventaja por esto, protestan, es muy tarde porque hay, tiene que haber tiempo para extraerlo y para aplicarlo. El día para votar ya llegó y se ha ido. Solo que un poco eso, pero en conclusiones que tenemos que... Introducir una manera de crear este mecanismo de control que nos permitirá tratar con... Este cantidad de dinero que, de parte de los gastos, es porque usted es un ciudadano, la persona común que quieren involucrarse debe tener la fe y la confianza, que las personas que están postulando son las personas que representen esos intereses de la comunidad. Pero de nuevo, creo yo que estamos hablando sobre algo ya bastante algo, pero... Este es un uso sin escrupulos de este tipo de política. Señora Perry, gracias. Me tengo el beneficio de hablar con Leon antes de estar en la noche. Sí, los comentarios que se han dicho aquí me han tocado porque sé que hay complicado de ver la importancia. Para mí, los distritos donde los votantes que votan es mucho menos hacer algo que en realidad funciona en este campo. Esto es una oportunidad de hablar con consejales sobre lo que se ha ocurrido en el reino, en la comunidad. Estos gastos independientes tiene mucho más impacto en distritos donde tiene menos votantes. También me tocó un comentario que el consejo ha hecho la semana pasada. Tenemos dos muy diferentes experiencias, otros distritos hablan acerca de los voluntarios. En las campañas políticas y que importantes, tan importantes es esta, un distrito, voluntarios y recuerdo fondos. Pero para las otras personas que están voluntaria, que son voluntarias, ese capello es lo único que tienen que ganar en todo el año. Esto es una oportunidad para ganar cinco o seis, nueve, nueve, una por edad. Temporalmente ya se acaba. Quizás en otros distritos personas son otras porque es emocionante, porque es divertido. Pero un distrito como el mío, ese asunto deja la... Bueno, estamos tratando con unas demográficas bastante diferentes que otros distritos. Por lo tanto, yo necesito saber si no tenemos una opción, hay opciones para dejar y limitar estos gastos independientes. Me gusta la idea de un joven de que estos parches de manas antes. Y también lo que sí me personificó de presentar declaración, pero claro, hay impactos de expresión libre. Para mí no he escuchado algo que sea otro decido, sea algo real. Para mí, los distritos como el mío, en la comunidad, que en realidad para esto pueden mirar una campaña, pueden mirar un reporte de un candidato y decir, "Oh, tal candidato no está recordando tanto", y uno parece que el plan hará llevar a cabo un gasto, no puede porque no está gastando, pasa el último tiempo para recordar dinero. La manera conven... No, pero ¿qué otras opciones? Te queremos, esa es una pregunta para la fiscalía, para la fiscalía. Como se dijo correctamente, el consejo de Perry. Porque estamos acerca de... Libre expresión y diferente invitación, es lo que podemos hacer como pueden la tendencia. El tribunal suprime, el tribunal vallajo dice que no podemos limitar gastos independientes. Y sabiendo esto, la comisión estaba tratando de presentar otras propuestas que... Podían incluir estas situaciones que han supuesto, provisiones que están pendientes. Que ustedes, es fundamental, en fondos públicos, límites de gastos, límites de contribución. De la fiscalía, de la purista de la fiscalía, hay un paso de la ley constitucional. Tanto con otros casos de primeras medidas, creemos que... La ciudad podría adoptar provisiones que proveerán para fondos públicos funcionales, para candidatos que no sean beneficiosos de gastos independientes, porque como el gobierno... Proviendo fondos, está proviendo fondos a otros candidatos, no es una restricción, tiene expresión. Por lo tanto, creemos que esto es... Está disponible bajo la legislación para que el consejo no se para a adoptar, pero tenemos diferentes preocupaciones acerca de escribir límites de gastos y límites de contribución para ciertos candidatos pero no para otros en base de gastos de tercer partido, si la razón. Por lo cual, tenemos estas preocupaciones y esto es nuestro consejo conservativo. Claro, en otro punto de vista alternativo, pero creemos que hay más certeza que un tribunal dará un fallo que estas provisiones, estas decisiones basadas en contenido porque ustedes están profe yendo. Se limitan su expresión, otra vez, el límite de contribución y del límite de gastos en la base de... Un tercer partido que dice estoy apoyando a alguien, no estoy apoyando a alguien, por lo tanto, es basado en contenido. Cuando estaba en la restricción, basada en... El tribunal requiere un interés igual. Es decir, de venir corrupción o la apariencia de corrupción, de paros interés debe de ser... Lo que en este punto de vista no creemos que... Las pruebas muestran que ese interés ha llegado en este caso en particular. Muchas personas se hablan acerca de... El campo no existe, no es un interés que tenga una suplora, dicho que no es un interés legítimo. Algunas cosas como eso, una provisión. So, it's with those cases in mind. And you've heard that there are competing cases in two of the circuits. Neither one are directly on point. And the one that many people talk about from the first circuit called Daggert v Webster is really not relevant to the situation that we're talking about here. Because that was a challenge by someone who actually made the expenditure. And who said their speech rights were chilled. And the May system also provided for additional matching funds. It's also a hundred percent, it's a matching fund. Quiero darle un ejemplo, rápidamente. Tiene a elección entre especial... Entre como mínimo de dólares en una administración de campaña de campaña. Bajo... La idea de que es para educación, si yo me dedico a las piezas de la elección. ¿Qué hará esto para prevenir que esto ocurra? Esto, esto no hará que esto deje de ocurrir, lo que podría ocurrir es... Bajo la propuesta de la comisión ética, hay... Si es una limitación que sea educación de votación... Siempre hay limitación que sea educación de votantes, que no sean gastos independientes, sino gastos independientes, entonces no, tengo puesto propuestas, si podría, yo consejar a quien tiene una situación que usted y su colega consejal rey se han mencionado dentro, escuchamos esta frustración claramente. Usted expresó la frustración, necesidades, ¿no? Podemos de acuerdo con la constitución limitar y excluir gastos de independientes, pero lo que podemos hacer es varias cosas, si no, primero, prodel, no incentivos a los que piensen invertir en las cantidades de gastos independientes porque bajo un sistema actual si quieren ese tipo de gasto independiente, de parte de Sir Weiss tienen toda la razón para hacer personalmente, su dinero hace que el jefe, va a dar todo y también recibirá una limitación de la máxima cantidad de gasto, entonces este problema, esta política actual está... De esta manera, nosotros podemos crear un sistema que no tiene este tipo de... Que no existe en otra parte del país, no existe ningún sistema. En el país tenemos este tipo de desventaja, al mismo tiempo, personas independientes, usted quiere gastar dinero sobre campaña de X. Pues usted quiere gastar dinero de parte de un candidato, que cobra el otro candidato de la oportuna, para que sus voces sean escuchadas, así puede crear un sistema donde podemos dar el mismo mensaje, lo único que se publicó, no tendremos gastos especiales, gastos de intereses especiales, donde las voces de otras personas van a ser excluidos, entonces esta persona va a ser elevada, les entregaremos un microfono para que puedan enviar su mensaje. La otra cosa que se propuso es hablar acerca de este temor y consejala, usted habló lo cuántamente acerca de la injusticia de nuestro sistema actual, actual, entonces podemos crear un sistema también donde este elemento ha sido mejorado tal como nuestra propuesta actual piensa ser, pero no estamos de acuerdo con la oficina de fiscalía que hay límites en libre expresión, estamos limitando expresión, solamente estamos tratando de se enforzar y se fomentar la expresión de otros. Muchas gracias. Una clase de preparatoria de amigos, póngase de pie, una clase de gobierno, la acción que está, gracias a todos por estar aquí. Muchas gracias. Disfruten su tiempo en... Actualmente estamos... La actualidad casi es un asunto muy fuerte, todos quieren tener forma de campaña, filial de campaña, ustedes han llevado a cabo, las personas han escuchado las frustraciones, casos comunes, ha sido un cambio. Que se cuenta como que tiene un impacto de candidatos con dinero y ella pidió que esté frustrada, que estuviera porque de nuevo cada pregunta que estamos haciendo acerca de qué es lo que podemos hacer en realidad para hacer que gastos independientes no cobran, que lo podemos hacer para prevenir que estas grandes cantidades de gastos sean incluidos en su campaña, aunque usted es la última persona que podemos hacer en realidad para elevar la voz de rótulos en toda la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Uno solamente puede competir con esto, yo no veo nada en esta propuesta que nos ayudará a competir con esto y con todo respeto causa como lo que hicieron los votantes cuando votaron por esto, con todo este paquete con límites de término y fondos público, lo que quieren ser, que los candidatos no gastaran una gran cantidad de dinero, ellos querían campaña negativa y ellos querían que estos gastos independientes llevaran a cabo, que querían declaración al público completa acerca de quién estaba otorgando los dineros tras a algún candidato, otras personas quieren saber quién contribuye estos dineros, quién sabe quién está otorgando fondos a un candidato en particular, ninguna de estas reformas han contestado a esto, mi opinión, solamente si pueden completamente excluir gastos independientes y pueden hacer que gastos independientes sean inclusos en la campaña, los últimos días estas propuestas no van a funcionar y francamente cuando un candidato me hizo, hace su mano al principio de la elección y dice, yo, tú no me gastar más de 330 mil dólares y yo se pagaré dinero público de los impuestos para controlar, que no va a ser el más dinero, este es el intercambio, que los que estuvimos dando, los que pagan impuestos yo no gastaré un millón de dólares si usted me da dinero público para localizar para los fondos de nuestra campaña. Esto está siendo aumentado fuera de la ventana porque el momento cuando cobra un gasto independiente en campaña, si es o para este broste, todo, el límite de todo se levanta este juramento que tuvo esta promesa con los que pagan impuestos, que si no gastaré más dinero, esto ya es todo fuera, todos pueden gastar lo que quieran y no solamente le estamos dando dinero de impuestos, estamos aventando dinero, impuestos más rápidamente es cuando le estamos ofreciendo 13, donde le estamos dando dinero público y luego gastarán lo que quieran porque los límites fueron ya excluidos. Yo creo que esto es reforma real y si queremos una reforma porque no hacemos que más personas voten y etcétera, menos de una fracción de la población, son los que eligen a personas que están en los impuestos elegidos, nosotros tenemos que hacer que todos voten en la ciudad para en realidad tener un pacto en quién será elegido para dar servicio en estas oficinas. Personas están votando y francamente, con mucho respeto, la comisión ética tiene que ser su trabajo es de encontrar a los que están siendo ilegalmente, los que están quebrantando, cuando cuando tomó una compañía de Roto, lo hace un gasto independiente en su campaña y no... Pues esto comenzó por lo que pasó cuatro semanas, pronto ya no podía contestar a esto, esto fue en diciembre de 1901 y creo yo que esto aún está abierto a su opción a esta campaña de Roto, les ha podido hacer esto y en otras tres campañas desde entonces ha estado en campana muy problemática, creo que nosotros debemos de... Los votantes quieren que nosotros identifiquemos a los que quebrantan esta ley. Creo que es lo que la comisión ética quiere que hagamos, quiere mostrar lo más que ustedes, sobre un comentario que se decía, la razón, lo cual creo que es que gastar dinero es en defensa de un gasto independiente que se hizo para otro candidato, quiero decir, y es por eso que tiene un problema con, no levantar límites todo porque no creo que uno sabe exactamente quién se beneficiaría, creo que hay candidatos que tienen que gastar más dinero después de gastos independientes y bueno, acabo de ver que es para así poder explicar por qué hay rótulos sobre ellos en toda la ciudad y que uno tiene nada que ver con eso, si literalmente es, son gastos independientes, nosotros no tenemos que ver nada que ver con eso, debemos de tener levantar el teléfono y llamar a ciudades para que viendo mejor es si les no hagan un gasto independiente, para mí no tenemos conocimiento de quién está haciendo estos gastos independientes, si realmente es independiente, yo no debo de ser castigada, yo no debo de tampoco ser obligada a levantar estos límites, es cuando un gasto independiente se lleva como parte mía, en contra mía, yo no tengo conocimiento de esto y no debo de ser castigada por esto, simplemente es independiente, entonces quizá ya todos los límites sean elevados, ningún límite cero, yo me siento bastante fascinada por esto, estamos viviendo un problema que estamos reformando lo que los votantes querían que le ocurriera en 1993. Con el señor Weiss, tenía me informado que hoy es día de recortorio de holocausto y en un evento donde tiene que ir a las diez y media, pero tenemos una música ahorita para ya terminar este diálogo. La señora ahorita pretende terminar el diálogo sobre este tema. Ocho, sí, seis, no. Es que también tengo que irme participar en otro evento, empezar a necesitar yo regresar en lo más pronto posible, quiero indicar que yo apoyo la propuesta de la comisión y yo regresar en lo más pronto posible para tratar de... Le votó, señor Padilla, gracias. Siempre sentí que casi todos tienen oportunidad de hablar ahora y estamos escuchando temas... Igual, igual, señor Aván, usted lo ha dicho muy levemente, el señor Coro lo ha hecho también sobre gastos independientes deben ser gastos independientes y la comisión ética ha tratado de solucionar este, el reto de quitar los incentivos, minimizar gastos independientes, la cantidad de gastos independientes, la cantidad de dinero de gastos independientes y el impacto en los casos de elección. Los que están en la oficina, pero gastos independientes por ley si ocurren independientes de un candidato, podemos colegas, pendientes es propuestas, medidas que ya se ayuden o lastimen a candidatos o dañen a candidatos por actividad que se ha llevado a cabo independientemente de... De las medidas que tienen un pacto para mejor o para peor que impactan a candidatos. Pero la realidad si están llevando a cabo independientemente de... La meta es de quitar incentivos a gastos independientes, entonces medidas presentadas a este consejo nos obligan a enfocarse con personas que participan en gastos independientes, ¿no? Los candidatos quienes están administrando su propia campaña y están... Puesto en su campaña independiente, personas que quieren postularse, esto es un punto bastante importante, también quiero recordarles que podemos hablar acerca de los fondos públicos, 13, 15, 16, no podemos hablar acerca de una elección general, contra de una elección primaria, pero aún tenemos la pregunta legal, el consejal que debe de contestar si quiero que lo que es el municipal conteste, que es lo que usted siente, que es lo que pese a usted acerca de una medida que aplica solamente a los candidatos que no beneficiaran esto porque es una gran pregunta, así que de quién decide esto, usted es sujeto a manipulación o no, hombre de tratar a todos los candidatos igualmente cuando tenga que ver con el dinero del público, tocando fondos del público, tenemos la libertad de tratar de candidatos diferentes a otros, además, aún si podemos solucionar estos asuntos fundamentales bastante grandes, hay dos asuntos adicionales que hablar, si es que vamos a aprobar esto, creo que esto podemos, con esto podemos mejorar, tengo razón para decirlo, fundamental pues vamos a poner esta una como un de pie para aplicar estos reglamentos o estas medidas a la elección general y solamente, solamente habrá dos candidatos porque esto va a ser de elección general en esta campaña, aparte que no te los controlo sobre los candidatos, sino además sabemos que en la elección general habrán dos, podemos tener diez o quince candidatos, hemos visto esto actualmente casi en caso independiente y empiezan a presurar fondo público, se cae de nueve, de diez, catorce, quince, aún manteniendo el máximo lugar, vamos a presurar significativo rápidamente la cantidad de fondo público a estas campañas también, creo yo que vamos a quitar incentivos, el deseo de contribución personal ya que esa persona llegue ese máximo y lo que pueden recibir en fondos iguales del público tendrá menos incentivo de buscar las contribuciones personales porque entonces será, estará bien o va a ser igual en cuanto a recuperación de fondos de... Pide otro tipo de contribuciones, por lo tanto, este es un... Algo muy importante, con la cual somos sensación, por lo tanto, quiero escuchar de las personas que pasan por la puerta como chupando, con la que estamos metiendo las acciones que ayudarán o quizás dañarán a candidatos como de soldado de actividad que se lleva a cabo independiente de... Consejales nuevo en la fiscalía, pasó estas propuestas cuidosamente con mucha consideración, las propuestas que proveen beneficios a ciertos candidatos y en otros creemos que hay una distinción entre proveer fondos adicionales del público y las otras propuestas, el cual le mata gastos de límites y límites de contribución, proveer fondos adicionales del público a candidatos que no se beneficiaran, es diferente porque el gobierno debería estar probando dinero, por lo tanto, usted no está limitando en la expresión de área, por lo tanto, creemos que esta distinción puede hacerse, entonces la limitación siempre y cuando el gobierno no esté, no decía, no decía, en la base de punto de vista cuando usted va a probando fondos de equilibro, son para candidatos que no se lucen, esto será, se puede definir posiblemente, es un algo que tenemos serias reservaciones en proveer la exclusión de gastos de límites de gastos en ciertos casos, en otros porque está basado en contenido de expresión y interés es necesario para tener esta producción, lo creemos que está presente aquí, pero es más que creemos que si usted excluye límites de gastos y límites de contribución, que para todos los candidatos en esta campaña o para ningún candidato en esta campaña, entonces ya no tendremos este preocupación que se tiene al concejal, si puedo, si comentaros esos. Pregunte, yo entiendo lo que los candidatos, el que están sintiendo el impacto de gastos independientes, pero esto es la ley actual, bajo ley actual, cuando gastos independientes se ven, acaba en el pacto en cada candidato, por lo tanto, el punto inicial es uno que comparte este punto, que usted ama, si no, lo que está tratando de hacer es asegurar que la respuesta a candidatos es uno que está basado en razón, en justicia y cierta variedad para que voces puedan ser elevadas para contestar a los límites en cuanto a la, ustedes, el análisis del primer enmienda de la constitución y el análisis en cuanto a nuestra posición. Libre expresión, pero lo que ha mencionado la fiscalía, el problema aquí es aparte de los que ciertos candidatos recibirán el beneficio cuando ocurre a gastos independientes bajo las reformas que hemos proponido, entonces nuestro punto de vista es así, el beneficio de ciertos candidatos es de parte de un límite de gastos que se ha excluido o fondos, el problema con que se le otorgará su distinción, su diferencia, el hecho de que el beneficio que recibieron tiene de... Y público en vez de levantar el límite de contribución de gastos, es difícil distinguir en los ojos de este candidato, la fuente de ese beneficio puede ser fondos públicos en vez de algo más, pero para hacer una distinción en la primera enmienda basando en esto parece un poquito, tú no, a nuestro punto de vista, tanto como el punto de vista de los otros grupos, también puedo, quiero decir... Para así poder escuchar este diálogo, gracias. La distinción solamente es una, la acción que hay, al proveer fondos públicos, que es una limitación en la expresión, en los otros dos provisiones, en aumentar contribuciones para ciertos candidatos y en otros, se aumentan límites de gastos para ciertos candidatos y en otros, estas son limitaciones en expresión, no proveen beneficios, son limitaciones en la expresión del candidato, el que no recibe, el que recibe beneficios de un gasto independiente. Muchas gracias. Consejal Parks. Fiscalía municipal, durante el diálogo usted citó varios casos de una supremo puede repasar uno tocante a la corrupción, esto es, el tribunal grande, el tribunal supremo, ciertos, gracias consejal Parks. Esto es el tribunal grande el tribunal supremo ciertos y gracias consejal Parks.
When we're talking about restrictions on First Amendment speech and particularly restrictions on spending limits and contribution limits We're talking there was because there are restrictions on speech the government is required to show a compelling interest. A compelling interest the Supreme Court has identified the only one they have identified is avoiding corruption and the appearance of corruption And that's one of the reasons why contribution limits are supportable because they address that interest. However, that interest isn't served by direct restrictions on independent expenditures Because independent expenditures are necessarily independent of the candidate and the candidate doesn't have anything to do with those expenditures. In addition, arguments were made in that case which was a very lengthy opinion I have the book here About leveling the playing field and the Supreme Court stated that not only was it not a compelling interest But it was not even a legitimate interest on which to base a government restriction on speech.
Okay, so we're basically saying the US Supreme Court says laying the plane leveling the playing field is a legitimate concern. Also, that corruption would be the only trigger that would cause a concern and I think you mentioned that we have not reached that threshold.
I have not heard any discussion or evidence that raises the issue that these provisions address.
Okay, and then the other one on free speech you said that's overriding as it relates to getting the message out versus campaign reform?
And many of these campaign finance reform cases are all about free speech of persons being to participate in the political process And people who make independent expenditures are people who want to get out a particular message that is separate and apart from a candidate And they have they have a right based on the Buckley versus Valeo case in the US Supreme Court To make those expenditures and to do so unlimited and without requiring of pre-notification of those.
I appreciate your comments and Forrest.
Councilman, I just might add that it's important to note that the city has been down this road previously as to ethics reform. The city attorney in 1991 did not sign off as to form an legality on an ethics package. It was challenged, the court ordered a rewriting of the ordinance, we paid fees and we were back to square one And a real factor here to take into consideration is as we enter the next election cycle All of this package will be vulnerable to challenge in the middle of an election which I think is unadvisable.
And also if I can add, Councilmember Parks, the challenge that we see most likely here is what we call an as-applies challenge. A challenge by a candidate who doesn't receive the raised contribution limits or spending limits And during the 2005 election or immediately thereafter as it applied to them And also at the same time challenging the system as a whole as it applied to them.
Thank you. I would just like to say colleagues, I would hope that we would listen to the direction of the city attorney. We'd also be aware of what the US Supreme Court has said and that we follow those directions so that we do not create unnecessary litigation. But also that if we're going to reform our ethics rules that is truly reform That if we're going to create a situation that we call people our individual expenditures independent That candidates aren't being held accountable for that independence, we do not cut off First Amendment free speech And that we do not put things in place that appear to be reform but is not true reform. And so I would say that we follow the direction of the city attorney and the US Supreme Court.
And Councilman, if I may, the US Supreme Court has never addressed the issue that's before this council today. There are four independent groups that have looked at this issue and all of them differ with the perspective of the city attorney's office And in fact, the city attorney's office altered their view over the course of the process here And has acknowledged that their view is a conservative one. There are two cases that have looked at these types of issues. One of them is more squarely applicable to the type of scenario that this body is considering And it has found these types of provisions to be constitutional. There is another circuit opinion, again, not binding on anything that this body might adopt That has reached a different conclusion but that has been undermined by further analysis within that court over time. So the law is anything but clear. This issue has yet to be considered in this part of the country and because of it because of that This comes down to a policy call, not a legal call. Reasonable minds have differed in regard to the constitutionality of these types of provisions And others have opined that it is not a free speech violation to empower the voices of others. No one's speech is being restrained here. What we're doing is ensuring that the voices of others are going to be reinforced. Other courts have found that that is not a free speech and not a First Amendment concern And because of that and because the law is anything but settled, this comes down to a policy call and not a legal call.
If I may please briefly respond, obviously we have a difference of views on these issues. However, the view of the city attorney is that the case that the Ethics Commission and others put forward as leading case on this issue Is not relevant to the situation that you have before you. That was a challenge from a person making an independent expenditure not from a participating candidate. It was a system whereby the only benefit given to non-benefiting candidates was additional matching funds Which we again said that we believe is constitutionally sufficient. They didn't have the issue of big raised contribution limits and spending limits because it's not relevant to their system as a hundred percent matching fund system.
Thank you very much colleagues, at this point I think we are going to table this item and we have a special presentation. We can vote on this but Ms. Perry, we have a special presentation for a moment of inspiration. We have right now before us colleagues, there's an objection from Mr. Holden to recessing this and going on with the regular agenda meeting to have our moment of inspiration. So we can take a vote on this. I'm not making the decision, we now have that before us which is why we're voting on it. Councilmember Perry has a special presentation, Mr. Holden, for a moment of inspiration, we have some dancers that are here. And because of that we are looking to do that right now.
Once you take the break, I'm gonna take a break and go on.
I think the easiest way to resolve this, Mr. Holden, is just with a vote, so why don't we do that? Okay, this would be to table this colleagues, to recess this special meeting and to go into the regularly scheduled meeting to have our moment of inspiration. Madam Clerk, could you please open the roll on this, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, five noes.
That is approved, so we will come back to it very shortly, Mr. Holden. Right now we'd like to recess the special meeting, Madam Clerk, and begin the general meeting. Please call the roll. Thank you very much, the regular meeting agenda is now before us and council continues to be officially in session. Colleagues, I know that was a split vote, may cause a little confusion, but now that the result is to take a pause and come to our An inspiration, let's proceed with the moment of inspiration and a couple presentations that haven't scheduled for today. Make it a little bit longer but I think it's simpler that way, so Ms. Perry, you have a...
Thank you very much, Mr. President, I want to introduce two very special women, Marta Schill and Zee Zazin, Zazin? They are here from an organization called NECDA. And here to give us a moment of inspiration. NECDA is a nonprofit organization dedicated to the appreciation of Mediterranean culture and arts. As part of their mission, NECDA has joined forces with Zee Zazin and Bahtet to bring to life a program called Healing Through Dance. This program raises money for people more homeless and for better women and helps them to regain a sense of self-esteem through dance. I'd like to present Marta and Zee Zazin. Zee Zazin is a Council District Nine resident who started Bahtet, a yoga studio in the original Arts District And works with NECDA on this program, so I would like to ask Marta to come to the podium with Zee and Marta will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry, could you rise please? Begin with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated, thank you so much and I hope you enjoy our moment of inspiration that we brought to you today. April 29th is the International Day of Dance begun by the United Nations in 1982, thank you.
Good morning, my name is Zee. I am a dancer. I am a woman who is healing through dance. The late great Martha Graham has said wherever a dancer stands is holy ground. I am humbled to stand here before you today esteemed council members and Angelinos To ask you to bow your heads and join with us in prayer for peace and inspiration. I would like to thank Councilwoman Perry for inviting us here to City Council today. As we all work to heal the city, our country, and our planet. Thank you.
Okay, you may begin. Let's have the dancing women. Thank you very much, the dancers were Laura Crawford, Irani De Silva, Jaina Kazuzian, Indra Payne, Janine Cafferty, Toni Perrine, Mary Ann Vander Card. Muchas gracias por este memorable moment of inspiration, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. I believe you have members one...
Tenemos miembros, una presentación, ¿no? Me han informado de otra presentación también.
We recognize Councilmember Pacheco.
Good morning, good morning, Mr. President, colleague. I simply wanted to present and invite all of you to a special event that we have here in the state of Los Angeles. As you know, in the Latino community and culture, we are very passionate about the Latino family And part of that whole presentation is part of the whole existence, and making children a part of a healthy and growing family. So at this point I want to present to the organizers of the event, we have here a day of los niños. Es este miércoles, que es mañana, de las 6 de la mañana en el pueblo. La ciudad de Los Ángeles se está acopetronizando el día de los niños, por lo tanto quiero presentar a Héctor Pérez Pacheco, a Irene Y Irene Patillo, nosotros somos parte de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, solamente celebrando los niños, los latinos, pero celebrando su esfuerzo y reconociendo su esfuerzo Para invocarlos de los niños y celebrar a América los jovencitos que son parte de los Estados Unidos y especialmente parte de la ciudad de Los Ángeles. Por lo tanto, de parte de la ciudad de Los Ángeles les presenta con esta resolución para y felicitarles su esfuerzo, muchas gracias.
Thank you, Councilman, on behalf of the Los Angeles Committee, we'd like to make a special thank to Councilmember Dick Pacheco and his staff For his support over the years and recognizing the deal of los niños. We'd also like to thank Mayor James Han and his staff for the great support they have provided us. I'd also like to acknowledge all the elected officials from the city who are present here today, who have supported us And in addition, all the citizens' school boards who have passed resolutions acknowledging April 30th as the deal of los niños. The Los Angeles Committee, the National Latino Children's Institute, has begun a national initiative to commemorate April 30th as the deal of los niños. There's committees like us throughout all the major cities in the community in the country committed to recognizing April 30th. A day for the celebration of children is already celebrated throughout America, throughout the United States. The purpose of this day is to focus on uplifting Latino children and all other children by the day of celebration. It's our hope that el día de los niños will become more just another celebration. We intend for this day to draw diverse communities together with the purpose of building a safe and healthy nation for our children. The participation of the entire Los Angeles Municipal Council community will play a vital role in securing a deal of los niños As a permanent annual celebration in Los Angeles and throughout the nation. At this time, I'd like to introduce my colleague and coach, Sheriff Uwe.
My colleague Irene Patillo para compartir palabras con ustedes. Claro, conseja Pacheco muchas gracias por conocer su esfuerzo de parte de nosotros que es parte de los niños de Los Ángeles Cuando los Ángeles están bien. Exactamente, y solamente queremos reconocer para... Queremos reconocer a los jóvenes, a los niños los que han sido golpeados Y de hecho de que nosotros nos salimos en programa de... Tenemos que tener un programa de financia de los niños y cuando... Con esto podemos celebrar seramente a los niños jóvenes porque serán saludables, serán protegidos. Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias colegas, también me gustaría invitar a todas las familias de Los Ángeles que traigan a sus niños mañana Obviamente para disfrutar el día de los niños en el pueblo aquí en el corazón de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, gracias.
And for a surprise presentation, Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, just last Friday, we acknowledged a program that the mayor came up with, his Free Cash for College project. And we had a young man named Vas Gonzalez who was a senator, state senator, whom I had served with when I was in the legislature here And among others who were being recognized for making that program a success that it was and still is. From my office...
de los Niños. It's this Wednesday, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow, that's the day of the day of the Los Niños. The city of Los Angeles is hosting the Dia de los Niños. So, I want to present to the organizers of the event, we have here in the pueblo, Dia de los Niños. It's this Wednesday, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow, that's the day of the day of the Los Niños. The city of Los Angeles is hosting the Dia de los Niños. So, I want to present to the organizers of the event, we have here in the pueblo, Dia de los Niños. It's this Wednesday, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow, that's the day of the day of the Los Niños. The city of Los Angeles is hosting the Dia de los Niños. So, I want to present to the organizers of the event, we have here in the pueblo, Dia de los Niños. It's this Wednesday, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow, that's the day of the day of the Los Niños. The city of Los Angeles is hosting the Dia de los Niños. So, I want to present to the organizers of the event, we have here in the pueblo, Dia de los Niños. It's this Wednesday, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow, that's the day of the day of the Los Niños. The city of Los Angeles is hosting the Dia de los Niños. So, I want to present to the organizers of the event, we have here in the pueblo, Dia de los Niños. It's this Wednesday, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow, that's the day of the day of the Los Niños. The city of Los Angeles is hosting the Dia de los Niños. So, I want to present to the organizers of the event, we have here in the pueblo, Dia de los Niños. It's this Wednesday, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow, that's the day of the day of the Los Niños. The city of Los Angeles is hosting the Dia de los Niños. So, I want to present to the organizers of the event, we have here in the pueblo, Dia de los Niños. It's this Wednesday, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow, that's the day of the day of the Los Niños. The city of Los Angeles is hosting the Dia de los Niños. So, I want to present to the organizers of the event, we have here in the pueblo, Dia de los Niños. It's this Wednesday, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow, that's the day of the day of the Los Niños. The city of Los Angeles is hosting the Dia de los Niños. So, I want to present to the organizers of the event, we have here in the pueblo, Dia de los Niños. It's this Wednesday, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow, that's the day of the day of the Los Niños. The city of Los Angeles is hosting the Dia de los Niños. So, I want to present to the organizers of the event, we have here in the pueblo, Dia de los Niños. It's this Wednesday, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow, that's the day of the day of the Los Niños. The city of Los Angeles is hosting the Dia de los Niños. So, I want to present to the organizers of the event, we have here in the pueblo, Dia de los Niños. It's this Wednesday, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow, that's the day of the day of the Los Niños. The city of Los Angeles is hosting the Dia de los Niños. So, I want to present to the organizers of the event, we have here in the pueblo, Dia de los Niños. It's this Wednesday, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow, that's the day of the day of the Los Niños. The city of Los Angeles is hosting the Dia de los Niños. So, I want to present to the organizers of the event, we have here in the pueblo, Dia de los Niños. It's this Wednesday, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow, that's the day of the day of the Los Niños. The city of Los Angeles is hosting the Dia de los Niños. So, I want to present to the organizers of the event, we have here in the pueblo, Dia de los Niños. It's this Wednesday, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow, that's the day of the day of the Los Niños. The city of Los Angeles is hosting the Dia de los Niños. So, I want to present to the organizers of the event, we have here in the pueblo, Dia de los Niños. It's this Wednesday, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow, that's the day of the day of the Los Niños. The city of Los Angeles is hosting the Dia de los Niños. So, I want to present to the organizers of the event, we have here in the pueblo, Dia de los Niños. It's this Wednesday, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow, that's the day of the day of the Los Niños. The city of Los Angeles is hosting the Dia de los Niños. So, I want to present to the organizers of the event, we have here in the pueblo, Dia de los Niños. It's this Wednesday, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow, that's the day of the day of the Los Niños. The city of Los Angeles is hosting the Dia de los Niños. So, I want to present to the organizers of the event, we have here in the pueblo, Dia de los Niños. It's this Wednesday, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow, that's the day of the day of the Los Niños. The city of Los Angeles is hosting the Dia de los Niños. So, I want to present to the organizers of the event, we have here in the pueblo, Dia de los Niños. It's this Wednesday, that's tomorrow, that's tomorrow, that's the day of the day of the Los Niños.
Han sido aprobados, procedemos. El asunto no tengo de iniciar público, es un 31/52. 141, es un caso especial. Los dos asuntos no tengo, pero si son del mismo grupo para dar con consejo municipal, no tanto es publicas, si os atrecho a desfechar, me decía que tuvo un caso especial señor Parks. 36 quiere que te salga como especial. 56, tenemos 36 especial, algo con otro. La 131/52, el alcalde quiero... Un voto no para 150, diálogo sobre 150, si no, rasé voto en el asunto 50. 32 y 48. A 150. Abre ese voto. Sirve ese voto. Y tabule ese conteo. 35, sí, uno, sido aprobado. Abre ese voto, sirve ese voto, y tabule ese conteo, 14, sí. Todo ha sido aprobado. Consejo han, quiero enviar 21 al alcalde. La actoria procedamos. 153, 54, 55, 56, son asuntos, las puertas cerradas. Call special by Mr. Zine. Mr. Parks, you wish to sign 56, is he called special? 36, 37, 38. Call special. 57, 58, 59.
Yes, items 56 through 59 are items which public hearings have not been held. Item 56 has been called special by Councilmember Parks.
Por el consejo de Parks. Okay, 59 called special by Ms. Mieszkowski. On item 57 and 58.
57 special, very special, and 58 for an amendment special.
Oh, righty then. Mr. Labonge called 57 and 58 special. One more special than the other. Es que usted 58. Okay, and I believe that is the end of the regular meeting agenda.
Yes, it is, Mr. President.
Okay, members, then, as we discussed, let's temporarily recess the regular meeting. Let's return to the special meeting. And if it's matters, we've been delivering for the better part of two hours this morning. Colleagues, let me also say, as we restore the queue, as it existed before we broke for the regular meeting agenda, los presentadores mientras revisamos a la agenda regular, que es señor Wise. Has left, but has notified us of his return. So if we had to take a vote, before his return, we'll see if it's a definitive vote, one way or another. And if it's not, then we very well reopen the roll when Mr. Wise returns. Quizás tendremos que reabrir el voto cuando regrese señor Wise. Señora actoria, dígame cuando esté lista. Okay, we're ready. I have on the queue Mr. Holden, followed by Mr. Zine, and by Ms. Mieszkowski each a second time. Is that accurate? Exactly, not on the queue, that thought they were on the queue. Okay, Mr. Holden. Señor Holden.
Mr. President, members, and to the commission, it's clear, you know, I have to applaud you for your effort.
Tengo que aplaudirle a ustedes por sus esfuerzos, sí. Entiendo lo que están haciendo, tratando de hacer, es un buen sistema antes de que el tribunal interfirió con todo este proceso e hizo posible tener gastos independientes, lo estamos gastando mucho tiempo. Y es justo tratar de, podemos hacer, analizándolo, siendo muy analíticos, que lo que podemos hacer para hacer. Una competencia igual, parece que el tribunal nos nega esta oportunidad. No significa que el tribunal está en lo porque todos se han nombrado la presidentes de los Estados Unidos. Hace poco, pero este es el tribunal.
And for whatever, and we do have, because we do have a constitution. We have to buy by.
Tenemos que llevarla a cabo. Me gusta todas estas fechas de nuestro lado, es que el municipal me acaba de informar que no puedo. Incluso en este programa, tocan tengan sus dependientes. Es una llamada de una señora, quizás que no esté en el distrito, una señora Alvarez.
Recording secretary for the Pico neighborhood council.
Sectoria para...
And she says she opposed to increasing in maximum camp a contribution.
Sí, la comunidad de Pico. Ella se opone a aumentar contribución independiente. Tenemos que gastar dinero en más, en las escuelas, en policía y en otros servicios.
Now, you have some people from the community saying, well, let's level the playing field, let's spend more money.
Hay que hacer esta competencia, no, la que está viendo para cierta población. Y también dice, no, no queremos hacer esto, suficiente, suficiente.
Just call in. I would say to you that we can't take care of this problem today.
No podemos resolver este problema, pero no sé que, cuál puede estar esta primera intención de enviar este asunto. Hay personas que dicen que hay que considerar la recomendación del comité o del alcalde de la comisión.
I like to hold them all in advance. But if I have to go with one, all the others, then I'll go with the mayor's recommendation. Because I guess it's better to do something than nothing at all. Even though, will not fix the problem.
No resolverá el problema, solamente indica que uno no puede tratar de, tratar esto en la elección primaria, pero que en la general tenemos un juego para hacer algo en cuanto a que la competencia sea igual, esto no va a resolver esto. Esto no lo resolverá, pero el hecho es que...
Those from the public who think that something should be done.
Los que piensan que se debe hacer algo, entonces, estamos diciendo que algo se está llevando a cabo y no es una solución total, pero es algo al menos.
I wish I could do more.
Me gustaría hacer más, pero, por lo tanto, quiero proponer.
It has not already been recommended. The mayors proposed in relation to 1A and 1 and 2.
Uno y dos.
Is there a second to that?
Do I get a second? You got a second?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Holden. Gracias, señor Holden. Councilmember Zine. Consejo de Zine.
Thank you, I attempted to expedite the matter, but it didn't work. So I do have some questions regarding the court and the decision.
Al tribunal y la decisión.
Level the playing field, the court said we cannot level the playing field.
El tribunal dijo que no podemos hacer que esta competencia sea igual, así es, entonces, estamos tratando de...
And be ahead of what the IEs will do.
Para que los IEs.
To level a playing field, which the court said we can't level a playing field. Are there any other ideas that came up during the discussion? To say this word would stand the constitutional challenge? And that we could impose that to level the playing field?
Porque yo, like many of my colleagues, have seen what we can do. Yo creo que los colegas han visto solo que los IEs pueden hacer en muchas, muchas campañas. Tratamos de presentar un plan, después ya estamos en varias, y tratamos de cambiar el plan, y cambiar el plan. Y creo yo que estamos tomando moridas pequeñas, que queremos tomar una morida grande para hacerlo justo, hacerlo justo a todos. Que permite los individuos de la comunidad, si puede que, por su lado, se para una posición política. Pero veo yo los obstáculos en el camino, y al mismo tiempo están diciendo que queremos hacer esto más justo, que más social, más equilibrado. Pero al cortar no tenemos la unidad legal para hacer. ¿Ha habido algún diálogo, alguna posibilidad de tener un buen entendimiento para poder hacer lo que estamos tratando de hacer? Para que estos IEs sean más controlados, para que sea más justo para todos. Nos escucharon diferentes situaciones cuando se presenté dos días antes de las elecciones. Si damos dinero al frente, y lo siento, ahora damos esta cantidad de dinero, si alguien presenta un dinero, 20, 30, 40 veces más, eso es un limite de lo que le daremos a este, en esto, cómo podemos ser justo para que sea justo, si la pregunta es, si la pregunta que, con la pregunta que ustedes, que es lo que pueden hacer, exactamente lo que estas propuestas quieren hacer y francamente. La versión que se lleva a cabo en el pasado, que estuvo en el circuito no vendo, en el caso de Dagger, puede hacer una respuesta de fondos públicos iguales para personas que no se benefician de ciertos tipos de gastos, o cierto condito por otros candidatos. En el caso de Dagger tuvo una antigua que... Una misinterpretación de protección de expresión libre. El propósito de la primera menda es asegurar la diseminación de información de fuentes diversas y antagonistas. De fuentes diversas y antagonistas, no hay derecho en la primera menda para monopolizar el mercado de ideas. Lo que no puede hacer es castigar a los que quieren tratar de hacer gastos independientes, decir algo, que usted recibe gastos independientes, usted recibirá menos en los fondos públicos, vamos a castigarlo usted, lo que sí puede hacer en el largo en el fondo, cuando la primera mende, cuando lo que su propuesta es hacer es dar este micrófono, este... Tal es al interés de otros, y esto es lo que estas propuestas buscan hacer, que asegura que otros permanecerán como competidores aún ante... En casos de esta gran cantidad de gastos independientes, como se han visto en las campañas actuales, parece nada para que, para que hacer. Dejar que todo esté tal como está. Lo que sí pueden hacer a través de estas reformas, es asegurar que otras voces también se escuchen aún en lugares donde está gastando bastante, esto es lo que el tribunal y el caso de Dagger aprobaron. Su centro para estudios fundamental, es casi como un hecho de comisión, el análisis de la reforma. Son muchos casos, cuando tenemos que mirar lo que es el interés del gobierno para nivelar esta competencia, apoyando esto, todos los grupos incluyendo la decisión de Dagger, que han decidido que no hay un compromiso de primer menda que necesitamos para que este suplemento no es un problema de la primera menda para proteger la voz expresión, no estamos implicando, estamos atendiendo, estamos quebrando los derechos de primer menda, asegurando que el lugar del mercado de ideas sea, que el profundo nivel tiene medio millón de dólares en gastos independientes. El otro individuo no lo tiene, entonces hay una falla. Y si hablamos acerca de dar esta por... How do we compensate for that? Para nivelar esto como... The way we would compensate is ensure that the individual who received that huge amount of independent spending, primero, no reciba el daño también. And secondly, what we would do is ensure that those others that aren't having their voices heard, porque ellos no reciben las cantidades de gastos independientes que han sido promocionadas, la gran cantidad que hace que, que todos respondan en esta manera, aseguramos que sus voces estén en la habilidad de hacer prestación y que no sean excluidos por los gastos, donde están los gastos independientes que siempre son en gran cantidad de nuestros campañas de municipales y de consejo municipal.
The city attorney, again, has thoroughly reviewed these issues, including the Dagger case. And as I previously stated, we have a completely different reading of that case. The Dagger case included a challenge, not by a participating candidate, but by a person making independent expenditures. Esto es el fallo de tribunal, está basado en... Free speech rights were restricted by providing additional matching funds to candidates. The court said it did not. That is not the concern that we have raised here at all. We are confident that we would be able to defend the city if an independent expenditure made such an argument. We believe, however, that the challenge that we would not be successful on, most likely, would be an as applied challenge from a candidate who did not have their contribution limits lifted, or their spending limits lifted, because they were supposedly benefited by an independent expenditure in a race. That is not providing the opportunity to those candidates to speak. It's actually limiting the rights of speech. And Councilman, if I may, the case on which the city attorney's office relies, didn't look at the first amendment concerns of candidates. It looked at the first amendment concerns of the independent expenditure maker. So there really are no cases out there that address this issue. Instead, if we look at what the Dagger court said was motivating, why it came out where it did, and founding there not to be first amendment concerns. It said, and I think you could apply this reasoning every bit as persuasively to what's before you today. It said if the state structured public funding with a blind eye to independent expenditures, such expenditures would be capable of defeating the state's goal of roughly proportionate funding to publicly financed candidates. If you don't act today, you'll be turning a blind eye to independent expenditures. And that was the exact type of first amendment concern and analysis that led the Dagger court where it did. The Brennan Center defended the provisions at issue in Dagger. They succeeded. There is no case in this part of the country on this issue. The Brennan Center has offered to come forward and defend any action that you all take today, if there's a challenge.
Y un reto, y con los amigos Mieszkowski, nadie ha presentado para el sitio de su implementación de retar este porcentual que no se adecuó que la fiscalía. Se encargue de esta casa, si es que, es un reto, sí, es sinociosa, pero han indicado que por los otros que se han enseñado, quizás ellos sientan como los defenden la ciudad y el centro de Brennan. Y otros han indicado una disposición de ser los que, pues, con esta batalla de parte de la ciudad, si fue, que simplemente no sabemos qué se aplica.
May I please respond? After further consideration of whether the city attorney would defend an ordinance that we did not sign off as a formal legality, we have concluded that we would be able to defend the city in such a matter. At the very least, we could have outside counsel assist us. But we have full confidence that we would be able to defend the city when that challenge was made to this ordinance.
If we implement something, we vote on something. There's a liability on this body. The city attorney is the duly elected representative to defend this body. Now, if we want to defend a policy versus a vote, the city attorney will do that, not the Brennan Center, correct?
Yes.
I mean, we are liable as elected officials, taking votes. And that this body is sued, I don't know if it's going to or not to sue. The city attorney would be the one that would defend the elected officials.
And certainly it's heartening that the city attorney has reconsidered and would be willing. I would guarantee that the Brennan Center would be there, given their commitment to this issue, to echo any view that this is constitutional, which would reinforce the might of that position in any court decision. But no one has said that they would sue. And even the type of ordinance that the city attorney is willing to sign on to, as we discussed in exchange previously, is not free from a legal cloud. Even that lesser type of reform would be subject to legal challenge. So no one said that they would sue. And whatever you do today is not going to guarantee, whether it's the mayor's proposal or some other version, that there will be no lawsuit.
I think our hearts are in the right place to correct the problem, to address the independent expenditure, to correct it, to do it in the proper manner. To do it in the manner that would be adequate, que será mantener así, que se pone un reto legal. Y mientras se ven que millones de dólares están incluidos en campañas a muchos intereses especiales, que tienen muchos asuntos especiales, que quieren asegurar que sea protegido este recurso, pero podemos apoyar, pasar a alguien, presentará y retará esto legalmente. El nuevo, el fiscalía tendrá que tomar una decisión que podemos conseguir a, pues, fiscalía independiente, salvo si el fiscal lo aprueba. Yo como colegas quiero corregir la situación, quiero que este sea justo, creo que le dice que no podemos tener un... Al elevar el nivel de competencia. Pero tenemos que lograr estos obstáculos, para que esto ocurra, este es el primer, la primera propuesta, pues, lo finalmente, lo próximo, mientras pasamos, trascendiendo campañas y campañas, quizás, aquí van a instar a otro fallo en el futuro, diciendo que gastos independientes pueden tener cierto control, no solamente estar libres, hacerlo brevemente, sin control, ni algún tipo de... Y resolución fundamental, es por esto que necesitamos el paquete que, que apoyó el comité de reglamento, porque estamos buscando algo que esté adelante, que esté delante de este paso que concuerde con que otros tribunales... Ha aceptado muchos grupos, han aceptado su decisión por el fallo, Dagger, y el punto de vista de tres grupos, dependiendo que este es un paso constitucional, nosotros sin duda no hubiéramos considerado ese tipo de... Cuesí, el punto de vista que conseja, que jodan a personas, esto es una opción adecuada constitucional, quizás, pues, estuvimos en algo diferente, pero la necesidad de equilibrar, curar el gran parche que tenemos a nuestro sistema, vis a vis the need, de la necesidad de adecuar, funciona tanto como que concuerde con los casos que sí existen, tal como siempre, pero tiene que ser, que todos estamos a un mismo, tres diferentes... Habidas para tratar de hacerlo, exitoso, gracias por el tiempo. Le metieron esto, gracias por su tiempo, pero pueden llegar a una solución, no, al principio fueron los cambios necesarios. Él pasó la noche, y también, antes de que la conseja le hiciese caso, que pasé, que conseja un asunto, un asunto. Mister Deaton, if you'll just let us know what 1A2 is, and if anybody else on the table would like to add anything to that as well, just we'll take that one as well.
1A2 provides additional matching funds to a candidate who faces independent expenditure in excess of the trigger amounts in 1A1. So for example, the mayor's matching funds would be increased by 200,000, city attorney 90, controller 60, and city council 25,000 dollars.
Consejo municipal 25.
The city attorney has no legal difficulties with this. Rules and election and the mayor's office, my office, have all subscribed to adoption of that particular item.
Aprobamos es adoptar este asunto en particular. Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else like that, anything else to 1A2? Oh, you're good. Agrega algo más.
Let me, in terms of the proposal to embrace this version of 1A1 and 1A2, I think it's our view that this is a tremendously watered down version of even what the city attorney's office had agreed that they were willing to sign off on too. By not allowing these reforms to apply to the primary, we've done a tremendous disservice to those who are trying to be competitive in city races and to those who are trying to fund through our city's matching funds program, that type of a system.
Que este tipo de sistema, parece que simplemente vamos a aplicar esto a la elección general. Completarle, algo después de lo que ha sido, también, lo que tenemos que considerar, tocante a lo que ha indicado para motivar este tipo de... Son decisiones que tenemos más de dos candidatos como que, pues, si vamos a aplicar estas reformas, primeramente, es gran cantidad de dinero que hace que este tipo de respuestas... uno a dos, 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 uno a dos,[361.04]
So that means that of the remaining balance that a candidate can raise, all of that can be raised from corporations of special interest. Because only contributions that are matched are limited to be raised from individuals. Our goal in this comprehensive package was to address independent expenditures. It wasn't to provide more public dollars for candidates. It's a solution in search of a problem. It dilutes the matching funds program. Nor does it shorten the amount of time that candidates need to raise all their money. All it does is shorten the amount of time in which they will reach their maximum matching funds. So we urge opposition to this proposal.
Chair, I recognize Councilmember Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I think there is some change. The rules committee recommendation. More to give the result of the first two elements of the proposal one A that we have this been on. I think we can stay with the initial increase in the grant in a general election. From the one fifth. One, de un sexto, un quinto, pero... We came out of committee is... So, todo el comité es de un cinco por uno junto con el tres por uno que acabamos de votar primero y segundo. Creo que habrá cierto diálogo de decisión o este paso de la presuración se lleva a cabo. No obstante, la cantidad de gasto independiente ya que solamente aplica a elección general, que mantengamos uno por uno en caso del gasto independiente que llegue a este cierto punto. Entonces llevaremos a tres por uno que acabamos de mencionar en el voto previo. También comporta todo asunto, va a trabajar propuesta uno A, todo canto de fondos personales. Aquí es un tres por uno que existe tanto. Por tanto, pido cambiar el comité de reglamentos realmente para reflejar estos cambios.
Is that seconded? All right, that has been moved and seconded. Is there anyone else wishing to speak or any...
If I might just add, the point of this, just for clarification for the record. The point of this proposal was one of those combination of goals, not just dealing with independent expenditures. But the goal was to expand on the match that candidates currently get in the runoff. And it was designed with that purpose in mind. Obviously, with the action that the council just took, the discussion that you're having makes sense. But there is a goal here which was important in our view. And that was to get as much matching funds to the candidates as quickly as possible. So they in fact would spend less time fundraising and more time communicating with the voters about the issues.
Just the difficulty, though, the way with your previous action, it says if you have an expenditure, you're going to, in the general, you're going to have three to one. If immediately in the general it goes to five to one, that has really no meaning whatsoever. Because you're going to get automatically five to one instead of three to one. No, in one A, if there's an expenditure, the individual gets matching at three to one. What this says is that in that's only in the general. What this indicates is that automatically in the general, you get a one-fifth grant and five to one. Well, an expenditure that has no value because you're already getting five to one. And your reward for an expenditure is three to one. So it goes backwards. So you've got to make a change here to reflect what happened in the first action. So what Mr. Padilla is suggesting is continue the one-fifth grant upfront. You'd have one to one al principio, tenor uno por uno. And then non-candidate spending, which is what happened in your one A, would be three to one. And also if there was not, if there was no non-candidate spending in four, if there's somebody who's spending more than 50%, you would get three to one. But if you do five to one, you have eliminated the incentives that you have in other places that have no meaning.
That's correct. Let me, at this point, recognize Councilmember Weiss.
Consejoal Weiss.
All right, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. If you hold my time, actually, do you want to respond, maybe Ethics Commission, to that, whether or not there's a way of resolving that? I would say, I'd be worried if neither independent expenditure happens or whether or not we had number four go through. And so I would be inclined to just say three to one, period. But I don't know if there's another idea that you have to resolve back for the general.
From my perspective, unfortunately, Mr. Dean's analysis is correct. And that is if the mayor...
You're going to hear all.
It's the only time you're going to hear it today. In, if the council wants to adopt the three to one rate as the mayor has suggested, it makes no sense to have a five to one in normal circumstances. So the three to one, a more diluted rate for responding to IEs is the approach. Then the other alternative would be to do a one and a half to one or a two to one response to try and get the match or to increase the grant to higher than one-fifth. The city attorneys expressed concerns about that. So we're a little bit between a rock and a hard place. But Mr. Dean's analysis is correct, unfortunately.
Okay, colleagues, this is kind of a no brainer for me. We've all been in this position, I assume, we've all, we're almost all of us. Where you're at the point of runoff, you're going to get those matched upfront to some point. But how much time do we want our candidates to be spending doing the fundraising? How much time do we want them to get that money up front? I am very much in favor of that. Candidates getting that money up front once they're in the runoff for that general election. I think it makes sense. I always go two point nine nine to one. I mean, I know that's whether or not the three to one has an impact on the general. But I think this is more important than that. So why don't I move two point five to one? You've got a little bit of a boost, obviously, if there's the IE and it goes three to one. But what that does is it says immediately that money comes in at a two point five instead of a one to one ratio. You've all made it to that runoff, you've made it to the general. And the whole point is you want to be out there campaigning, talking to the voters, not being there on those early days, necessarily just raising money. So I would propose that that be the... What's before us right now is two point five to one, be it automatically, and keep it at the one-fifth.
There a second?
Seconded by Councilmember Mr. Sikowski. Councilmember Bernson.
Yeah, I think that's already reflected, isn't it? When you get that, I think that's already reflected. But I need to ask a question that I don't think anybody's asked so far. When we get that bump to three to one or two point five or whatever it may be, does that go all the way back to the start of the campaign for all money collected? Or is it, in other words, retroactive to what other candidates have already collected? That they're eligible for matching funds on? Or is it, is it from, or perspective from the point of the independent expenditure committee?
It depends on which circumstance we're talking. In the first situation, if we're talking runoff election where there are two candidates and there's no independent expenditure yet because the...
There's no independent expenditure.
Right. Then there's a one-fifth grant that will be provided once the candidate is certified to be on the ballot. And then from that point forward, as a matter of course, they would qualify to receive matching funds at a two point five, two point...
Would it go all the way back to the start of the campaign?
No.
Or just from the point where the independent expenditure committee has filed?
If I can clarify, I'm getting to that if I might. This is in a general election.
I understand that.
And the matching funds would start at the general election.
Okay.
At the point at which an independent expenditure happens that lifts the limit further.
Yeah.
Then the way we had proposed it is that from that point forward, candidates would get the accelerated match.
It's from the point forward, that's all I wanted to know. Yeah, doesn't go all the way back to point... Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Mr. Sikowski.
Members, I think what we're hearing today now, I mean, obviously, this was all very, very delicately balanced as an entire proposal. And by voting what was done earlier, we're now attempting to modify it literally on the fly to make it make sense. Because this was based on two principles. More matching funds to those who are not beneficiary of independent expenditure and accelerated. Not only more overall, but accelerated. By what we did in item one, I think Mr. Garcetti has come up with the best alternative to still keep both principles in place, but at a much reduced amount. It's, but I think we're going to have the same impact or same effect when we deal with item four and the others because of that imbalance that's now been created. I think that at best, whether or not anyone at the table is able to help in this one other possibility, but then it totally negates the ability to get more in the matching funds is to give the higher amount upfront. I mean, again, the Ethics Commission started with, you're in a runoff, you've made it, you're a matching funds candidate. Get 100% of all the money upfront. That's what the Ethics Commission started with, was just, you're going to get there eventually, likely. You're in the runoff, you're one of the top two candidates. Release you from the time of having to spend that very short six-week period raising money because you'll get all the matching money you're entitled to upfront. The city attorney had a problem with that. Other, I think, I'm sorry, the city attorney didn't, that was the mayor's?
City attorney did.
City attorney did, yes. So the best we can now look at is how high a grant we can go with that still achieves that goal. And then the minimal amount that we can accelerate on independent expenditures beyond that. I don't know if there's anyone who is looking to make a suggestion of a higher grant amount percentage?
I think to review the committee discussion, I think we attempted various iterations and the highest the city attorney's office felt comfortable in going was at a one-fifth ratio. But I think it's important at this juncture to take a step back. We've been at this for weeks. We are all now well steeped in the very specific details of the proposal. But to take a step back, how we got into this was really wanting to tackle independent expenditures as identified by really everyone as the highest priority issue. And I think it's important to keep our eye on that goal and not dilute the very scarce and important resource of the matching funds dollars and simply accelerate them because, because candidates have qualified for the runoff. Not all candidates reach their maximum amount of matching funds. In fact, only 16% of candidates in the runoff have historically reached their maximum amount. By accelerating the match, by giving candidates as much as possible, as fast as possible, whether it's three to one or five to one, we would be spending more public dollars for candidates. And really, that has not been identified as a problem in need of a solution. So I urge you to retain the very appropriate focus on addressing the problem of independent expenditures and not simply accelerate the rate of matching funds.
Again, I think for this marginal difference in benefit of the accelerated match, it will be of some substance, some assistance. So the recommendation that Mr. Garcetti made is what I second.
Councilmember, did you have a response?
Well, we actually have been trying to divine the full parameters of the proposals that have been passed. And one way to strike the balance, but frankly, we're not sure whether the last vote has addressed this issue or not. One of the other proposals in regard to the general election for independent expenditure responses was to have the amount of matching funds increased when there are large amounts of independent expenditures for those candidates who don't receive the benefit of those independent expenditures. That's proposal one A, number two. I'm not sure whether the last motion addressed one A, number two. If it didn't, that provides a way to further ensure that there would be some response, some empowering of voices if there is independent spending in the general election above and beyond the increased matching funds. So that might be a way, again, to try to achieve the balance of the two objectives.
Just for, just for, proposal one A, two is passed by the council in the overall motion. Was passed.
Thank you, Councilmember Holden.
I think it's already been pointed out that some people in the general election didn't reach their max in order to match in funds that's there. Mr. Garcetti, I mean, somebody's got to wake up and understand the fiscal impact that the shortfall is having on our budget. And the taxpayers are not likely to support the concept of giving away more money, especially to politicians. And I would say to you that, Mr. Deaton, your analysis is unfortunately correct, as so well stated. And so I'm going to go with your unfortunate...
It's unfortunate, happens quite often.
...of this assessment. I must tell you because with your assessment, we give away less money to the politicians than with Mr. Garcetti's motion, which gives away more money to the politicians. No, 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 you're giving the money away to the politicians, that's what you're doing. And we have a budget shortfall, we can hire more police officers with that.
Actually, Councilmember, I do need to correct you on that. That is not possible with the amount of the trust fund that the voters created.
No, no, we can give you less, we can give you less because you don't need that much more.
Not according to the charter, you can't.
Well, we have to change the charter so we can give you less. If you've got that much money accumulating in your trust fund, then you have too much. And we have to take another look at that. In fact, we should be able to look at that on an annual basis and change the charter to allow the council to make an assessment of what you have on hand. Every other department, the money rolls over and comes back and we use it in the budget. Now, if you guys get that kind of door in the budget, we need to take a look at that. And then you need to change the charter to be able to do that. And while we have this matter before us, we should send it to committee with the prospects of having a charter change, along with other charter changes that's coming out of this, to make sure you can't have all this money being accumulated. How much money do you have in a trust fund? Do you know?
I don't have that number offhand, no.
Well, I think you should have that number for the public.
The budget, the charter requires the city to appropriate $2 million a year into the matching funds trust fund. And the charter also mandates that those funds be used only for the matching funds program.
Well, how much money have you used in the past year?
I don't have, I can get those figures for you, I don't have the money.
Every year for $2 million, even when there's no election? Two million, two million, when there's no election? You have millions of dollars in that trust fund that's not unused. And we could use that for public safety. Some of it, I would say, you have to take a look at this, I think. The mayor is faced with a budget shortfall. There's going to have to be a charter change. So, I mean, sometimes you ask for more than what you get. This is a real problem.
Mr. Deaton, you have a response?
I just would like to focus on, I think everybody agrees, at least up to this point, on one-fifth of the matching fund being given initially. Your action prior was three to one if there was a non-candidate, an independent expenditure. So the question is, what in between, what is it going to be otherwise? If there is no, if there is no independent expenditure and if there is no outside private money, your own money going into the campaign, is it going to be one to one, two to one, two point five to one, or three to one? I think most people at the table would suggest that three to one would give no incentive whatsoever to the independent expenditure. And so you're between one point one. And with all due respect, Mr. Holden, it's actually not the total amount of money that you are changing, it's the rate at which you provide to the candidates. I do respect you, Mr. Holden. So I think that the focus should be on, you want it one to one, two to one, two point five to one. And that's really the only, I believe, the only issue here in one A, three. Mr. Garcetti's motion is two point five to one, Mr. Padilla's is one to one.
Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, just very briefly to give the inverse of Mr. Deaton being unfortunately correct. Mr. Holden, you're fortunately wrong on where the money comes from. It is part of a trust fund. And before this becomes the soundbite, I just wanted to make clear that it's factually inaccurate that we would allocate any more money to the politicians. That money is set, it's the rate, not the amount of money. And it's in a trust fund, and that's already set. So just wanted to state that for the question.
High call for the question. He was the last speaker.
There are two motions before council. The Councilmember Garcetti moved that the matching funds be at a rate of two point five to one. And Councilmember Padilla's motion was one to one. The two point five to one would come first.
Everybody in their seats. We're voting on the two point five to one. Open the rolls.
Abrase voto.
Close the rolls.
Abrase voto, si, abra voto, y te da un segundo. Si, si, no, no.
Madam Clerk. Second part.
Okay, now, the next one is Mr. Padilla's motion, one to one.
Mr. Padilla's motion, one to one. Mr. Weiss.
I thought the discussion we had at the beginning, and I apologize for this, basically involved in this panel agreeing with Mr. Deaton in terms of... I mean, so if that's the case, this does not appear to be something that there really is a disagreement. I just want to clarify on that. We were in agreement that, given the council's prior action, it should be something less than three to one, but I assume that Mr. Padilla's motion included the one-fifth grant.
One-fifth grant, one to one match.
Uno por uno, en caso de que, en caso independiente, pasar a tres por uno.
Everyone clear on that? I'll open the rolls.
Abrase voto.
Close the rolls.
Si, abra voto. Y te da un segundo. Catorce, si, uno.
Next item is one A, four, which is accelerate the matching funds to three point one, three to one, when our opponent contributes personal funds greater or equal to 50% of the spending limit or exceeds the spending limit. The city attorney, again, has no difficulties with this. Rules and elections move to adopt the commission's recommendation. I'm recommending the rules committee recommendation. And the mayor's office, I think, is one to one.
Correct, for the same reasons stated about the confusion and difficulty of administering this type of measure in a multi-candidate primary, we believe that it's more appropriate to reserve this proposal for the general election. Which is consistent with amendment D, one D.
Ethics Commission.
I think there's one significant difference here. The concern of the mayor's office in as to an IE response in the primary was that there could be game playing by those involved in making independent expenditures. And that because people are making independent expenditures are separate from a candidate, they can't be controlled by a candidate. Here, we're looking at the direct response of a wealthy candidate making their own decision to pour money into a race. So we're not looking at some independent group being able to possibly gain in the system. We're looking at what should happen when a wealthy candidate tries to infuse their own money into a race. And I think as to this provision, there really can be no reason not to have it applied to both the primary and the general.
There's no questions. Councilman Padilla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, also want to call attention to amending motion D. I believe this. Yes, the latest of this matter. Supporting the proposal for the Ethics Commission, but once again driving the distinction between the primaries and the general election. So I would ask for a motion D, which assets only the general election and not the primary. For the same reasons that we've talked about in the other actions.
Councilman Mr. Sikowski.
I understand that we do support the Rules and Elections Committee, which was consistent across the board with what the Ethics Commission recommended, what Mr. Deaton is recommending. And again, this is dealing with that personally wealthy candidate, not the independent expenditure. And it does have just as much effect, if not more, in the primary where that independent candidate, I think, personally wealthy candidate really has much where to fall to try to overpower. Literally, I've gone with dollars, any or all of his or her opponents. And so I think that the match here accelerated makes a lot of sense. So I'd ask for my vote. And a no vote on Mr. Padilla's motion.
Madam Clerk.
The amended motion, one D, is due to council.
Pido un voto sí, pido un voto no para...
The amended motion, one D.
Right. Mr. Padilla's motion.
La moción señor Padilla, uno D.
Mr. Padilla's motion for the runoff only for the general election.
Solo para la elección general.
Open the rolls.
Abrase voto.
I have a vote, please. Close the rolls.
Si, abra voto. Tabule segundo.
Seven eyes, eight no's.
Si, seis, ocho, no.
And then proposal one A, number four, is before the council.
Propuesta uno A, número cuatro, está pendiente.
Open the roll.
Abrase voto.
Close the roll.
Si, abra voto. Tabule segundo.
Fourteen eyes, one no.
Next item is page three, proposal one B. And this is when there's independent expenditures, the non-benefiting matching fund candidates would have their spending limits eliminated and contribution limits raised in response to that independent expenditure during both the primary and general election. The triggers that are being posed by Ethics are the mayor's $500,000, city attorney and controller $200,000, and the city attorney has... believes, I'll let him explain a little later, but that the court would likely conclude that this proposal would violate the First Amendment. The Ethics Commission obviously does not agree. Rules and Elections Committee... Recommendation was to adopt the Ethics Commission's recommendation. My recommendation is to amend the language that if you eliminate spending and contribution limits, it should be to all candidates or none. And otherwise, receiving file proposal one B. Mayor's office, I think, is essentially the same. And agenda item one D is a motion by Mr. Padilla, which would be in conformity to my recommendation and the mayor's recommendation. Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, colleagues. This is the big one. We've heard the city attorney this morning express concern about this element of the proposal and whether or not it treats both the participating candidates and the non-participating candidates equally in this regard versus the other element of the proposal. This far and above is where the city attorney has reservations about the constitutionality of this particular proposal. So I do have a motion D. Pero tanto pido ser un cambio, titulada moción D. ¿El cual concuerda con la fiscalía del CLA y la alcaldia? ¿La moción D está en desacuerdo con mi moción? Pero si no tenemos esta moción tal como la ha sido la fiscalía municipal, creo que estaremos abiertos a este reto legal. Pido su apoyo de el cambio, uno B. La estación de esta moción es porque solo se debe aumentar los límites sin máximos. Pero quiero asegurar que tratamiento injusto sea borrado para los candidatos competentes con los que no participan. Fiscalía, señora abogada. Quiere cambiar esto.
Councilmember Padilla, after further review, we think it would be better if we were to lift the limits for contribution limits and spending limits, that it should be done for all candidates, not just participating candidates.
If I might, councilmembers, respond. We have, as we indicated in our letter of April 22nd, have very serious concerns about amending motion one B. I think it's important for the council, the motion would lift the spending and raise the contribution limits for all candidates in response to non-candidate spending. This is a motion, in our view, which would only compound the existing problem. It does not improve the system, it does not reform the system. It attempts to respond to the city attorney's concerns in one way. But I want to share with you that our view is that, again, it is a way that would only compound an existing problem. You would be in a situation where candidates who have benefited from, who have not benefited from large expenditures... Who have benefited, excuse me, who have benefited from large independent expenditures have their spending limits lifted, and they'd also then have the ability to have their contribution limits lifted. So you would have a council candidate who, for example, $50,000 in independent expenditures, their spending limit would increase or would be lifted as a current law. And in addition, they would be able to raise contributions in excess of the normal limits. We think that the proposal to have... We think that the proposal to have the contribution limits lifted as one part of the response to independent expenditures and one part of the comprehensive system, that that makes sense. We do not believe that it makes sense when you do it for all candidates, because, again, that just compounds the problem.
Let me add two additional clarifications. First of all, this proposal 1B or 5B is not what is required to address the legal concerns with the city attorney's office. It goes beyond that. Under current law, none of the contribution limits are lifted. This would take the windfall of current law, where the spending limits are lifted for those who receive independent expenditures, and create an even greater windfall and an even greater disconnect. Namely, this would go beyond current law and say that the contribution limits of people who receive large amounts of spending are also going to be lifted. So under current law, no one gets their contribution limits lifted. We can achieve equality by simply allowing that to remain in place. We don't have to go one step beyond the problem that we have in current law and exacerbate it by saying that when independent spending occurs, we're not simply going to lift the spending limits for people who receive it, but we're going to lift the contribution limits for people who receive independent spending as well.
Gastos de...
Councilmember Labange. I pass. Councilor Ms. Skalski.
Thank you. Members, this one singularly could essentially literally unravel what we have done for the last 10 or 12 years. This is what it says, contribution limits, that $500 limit that we've known so well, that we've worked with, that we've done with, $1,000 on the citywide. Go by the wayside. Once an independent expenditure is made for everyone. You can get $5,000 from one person in our legal contribution limit. You can get $25,000 from one person. If an independent expenditure is made for anybody, every candidate, all the candidates can go and raise literally unlimited amounts of money with the passage of this one. It really is a rolling back the clock. It really is tinkering with what the voters voted on initially. And I think it is really saying, when independent expenditures made, the sky's the limit. And that's partly what we've been doing in the past. This would just confirm it and confirm that. And I think it's a really, really drastic step forward. But again, the council has indicated that there's not a separation between benefiting and non-benefiting. But this one, I think, is really problematic. So again, I would support the Ethics Commission recommendation, which was what came out of the committee.
Lo cual fue.
Madam Clerk. Mr. Deaton.
Actuario tenemos.
It turns out the spending limits, if this happens, will completely off. The contribution limit is 7,000, I guess. They're mistaken.
Actually, there's an aggregate maximum under the charter, so the maximum contribution would be 7,000, and I believe the spending limit would be up to the amount of the independent expenditure. But I do want to point out that the trigger for the lifting of the contribution limits is extremely high. It's at the highest level. Each of the triggers are at different levels. So in the mayor's race, there would need to be half a million dollars in independent expenditures for the lifting of contribution limits. In the citywide, in the other citywide elections, the trigger would be $200,000, and in council races, the trigger would be $100,000. So this is not something that would happen in every instance. It's really the exceptional case, and in those exceptional cases, you need the exceptional tool of additional contribution limits.
Are there any other comments from Ethics?
No, I would hope that our comments would speak for themselves, our previous comments. We propose this motion.
Just to remind you that this is the provision that we, the city attorney's office believes is most likely subject to challenge and most likely would not be sustained if a court were to review it. When challenged by a candidate who was benefited by an independent expenditure during the election and who therefore would be continue to have the restriction of the spending limit and the contribution limit not raised. So that's just a summary of our position. If you have further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Councilmember Rayes.
Esto es un caso usual, pero hay comentarios que se han hecho, queremos devotar. Así que... Pasan unos tiempos, regresaremos 10 años. Señor... Análisis. ¿De qué estamos hablando aquí?
What we will be talking about here, councilmember, is going in the opposite direction, the direction that we all started.
¿De dónde empezamos?
The point of the recommendations that we have made is to try and grapple with the sort of irrational responses we've heard described. When independent expenditures occur for a candidate, that candidate also gets the benefit of their spending limits lifted. That didn't make sense to us, that didn't make sense to a lot of people who encouraged this process to deal with independent expenditures. What this motion would do, 1B would do, is to make sure that when independent expenditures happen, not only does the benefiting candidate have the freedom to spend as much as they want, in addition to the benefit they receive from the independent expenditures, they'd also have the additional benefit of going out and raising contributions of up to $7,000 from groups, individuals, whoever, to respond to those independent expenditures as well. It doesn't make sense to us that that proposed benefit be accorded to somebody who's already received a huge sum of independent expenditures. It makes sense, in our view, if the council chosen to limit this. Or the council does choose to limit this. Only the candidates do not benefit, who haven't been supported by independent expenditures. It makes no sense to give this additional benefit when candidates have already benefited by those large expenditures. They received a benefit, we don't think they need another one.
So in this case, your recommendations. At this point, as stated by the city attorney, it could be questioned and taken to court because of the First Amendment.
Está presentando en tribunal por la primera medida. Es lo que le ha mencionado la fiscal municipal.
But this amended motion goes far beyond that concern. The city attorney's concern has led them to recommend that the rules and the Ethics Commission proposal not be adopted. The amended motion doesn't simply say, let's leave the status quo where it is. The amended motion would provide for even more windfall and benefits to those who receive independent spending. So the amended motion takes the current irrationality in current law and makes it that much worse, meaning there would be that much greater incentive for special interests to spend on behalf of a candidate. Because when they do so, that candidate is going to have even greater windfalls that will flow to them.
We have been discussing this for four hours. We've gone to this point. And it's puzzling to me that we're at such extreme ends right now. What is the middle ground? I mean, you made a very significant statement that this act will take us to an area that we should never have gone to because our effort. And everyone's saying this in the council floor, that we want to curb this flood of IEs and the special interest groups' influence and enhance the confidence of the common, you know, the common person to get involved in our process, knowing that we have a low order turn out anyway. So where's the middle ground? ¿Dónde está?
I think the middle ground is to reject motion 1B, because that would be backsliding, because this would be a retrocede. The council is uncomfortable with the city attorney's concerns having been raised, and they may at least support the status quo rather than backsliding. The status quo would be that there would be no contribution limits lifted under any circumstances, but for a wealthy candidate scenario that's already in the charter.
And so the court will take us...
And the spending limits, in this case, would be, the spending limits would be lifted for all candidates as is the current step. But again, to support 1B to increase contribution limits to all candidates makes no sense, and it would be backsliding.
So the assumption is that when we go to court, if the city attorney says we will be sued, considering what the fiscalian does, we'll take it. Eso lo queremos. Nos daremos cuenta de eso. Es una pregunta que está pendiente. Creo yo que lo que la comisión ética está diciendo es que...
Cuando un gasto independiente actualmente, los límites... esos gastos son expirados, eso es cierto. Pero contribución para ese gasto no cambia, no cambia esto. But with all due respect, this may be an unfortunate statement, but it is not backsliding altogether. The fact is that if you get an independent expenditure and you have no way to raise money... Then you're at the mercy of that independent expenditure. If somebody comes into a raise and you're limited by the amount of money you can raise on the contributions under the current situation, and that doesn't change, listing the spending limits means you're going to be very busy trying to respond to that independent expenditure. So it's not a clean sweep. I can argue both sides, but one has to understand that if you're the victim of an independent expenditure, having your spending limit increased is okay, but if you have to continue to raise your contributions at $500 apiece, as opposed to being able to go up to $7,000 to respond to a $50,000 or $100,000, then I think you're at a detriment.
Councilman, maybe I can offer a very specific illustration that goes back to some of the issues we raised earlier. Especially the horrible hypothetical and the concern that we have when we're talking about people gaming the system would be the following.
Cuando vamos cerca de este sistema, es lo siguiente. Bajo 1B, alguien puede apoyar a un... se gastan $200,000 para hacer puerta a puerta y poner publicidad en todas las puertas bajo la... sistema actual, esto será... entonces su amigo puede gastar $200,000 y recibir... el beneficio de estos gastos. Esta moción también tiene el beneficio de estas $7,000 en contribución de personas de esto, para nosotros si queremos que esto quede un gran incentivo para amigos, candidatos. Eso puede ser de grandes gastos, que te pasó a la mente, recibir al beneficio, de libertad, de los límites de gastos que estuvieron acuerdos en el cambio de dinero público, que también recibirán el ventaja de grandes contribuciones además. La ventaja, mientras tanto, recibir este beneficio hasta los $50,000, para nosotros no creemos que eso tenía sentido.
Machiavelli is alive and well, no matter which way you go. Don't forget, no matter how you approach this, the other side is going to figure out how to do whatever they need to do. And I agree with just what she said. That's what I would do. But I haven't shared with you what I'd do if you didn't do the other as well. So I mean, it's just, it's a matter of how you approach this, and maybe the $7,000 is more than you want to do. But if it's late in the campaign, and there's an independent expenditure, having your spending limits go up doesn't help you.
And it makes sense if your candidate who hasn't benefited, but if you've already benefited a view that it's too much of a good thing.
Que si es un candidato que no es beneficia, pero se beneficia es algo sumamente...
Councilman Parks. Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just need one point of clarity. Is that, if I understand the discussion, you're opposed to 1B? Because you said it takes a step back. No, when you said what's currently existing... You would support that above your current recommendation?
No. If I could, we are opposed to motion 1B. The amended motion 1B. We continue to support our proposal, as we've discussed. But focusing on proposal 1B, yes, that would be more...
You said, as best as we are, then go to 1B, as far as your concerns are.
It's better to defeat motion 1B, yes.
And stay where we are?
No, I wouldn't argue that, but I wouldn't argue that it's better to defeat motion 1B.
That's what I want to find out. You said that 1B instead of what you're recommending or 1B...
No, I'm saying as to the question of motion 1B, which is the question before the council. We would urge your rejection of that motion.
But I thought when you talked about if you go to 1B, you would prefer to stay where we are. Priorities are, like their proposal first. Second would be receiving and filing the whole matter, and third would be the adoption of that motion. All right, thank you. We're going to have a clarification. Madam Clerk.
I think there might be some confusion, because the amended motion is 1B and the proposal is 1B. So when the Ethics Commission talks about 1B, they're talking about their proposal.
So what you have...
No, no. When we're talking about what troubles us, we're talking about motion 1B. The amended motion is, in our view, a step back from current law.
Moción 1B, estamos de noche, por última vez lo comenzamos, que debe ser implementado para mejorar la ley actual y para resolver el problema de los gastos independientes.
Amending, I mean, maybe we should simply call it the amended motion, is what we believe would exacerbate the problems of independent spending that exist in current law.
In any event, the agenda item is 1B, and that agenda item would be to...
Asunto 1A, es uno de este asunto.
As opposed to the Ethics Proposal 1B. Would be to lift spending limits and raise contribution limits for all candidates in response to an independent expenditure. And obviously, that's not the Ethics Commission. But they're both 1B.
Ambos son 1B, eso es para...
It definitely enhanced understanding, Councilman Weiss.
Procedamos para un voto.
We need a vote. We have four in the queue.
If I prefer the status quo...
Or receiving file.
Amendment motion 1B. Which I vote no on everything, because I actually think in this case, status quo's better.
That's true. We have four speakers, so let's take a vote if we want to continue or call a question. Open the roll.
Abre se voto.
Open the roll on previous question. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
15 eyes.
Well, that it closes it. Madam Clerk.
Okay, before the council is amended motion 1B, Padilla Parks.
De Padilla Parks.
Everyone understand where we're at?
Estoy entendiendo donde estamos.
Open the roll.
Abre se voto.
Hold on. Councilman Holden, do you need clarification? Madam Clerk, will you repeat it again, please?
Okay, before council is amended motion 1B, which would provide for the lifting of spending limits and raise contribution limits for all participating candidates in response to non-candidate spending in city elections.
Okay, open the roll.
Abre se voto.
Close the roll.
Cierre se voto.
Tabulate the roll.
5 eyes, 1 no's.
Next item, please.
Before council is the Ethics Commission Proposal 1B.
La propuesta de la Comisión Ética.
Amendment Clerk, do you have clarification, please?
This is the Ethics Commission Proposal 1B, non-benefiting matching funds candidates have spending limits eliminated and contribution limits raised in response to independent expenditure during primary and general election.
Abre se voto, cierre se voto y tomamos el segundo.
Tabulate the vote.
7 eyes, 8 no's.
Then also fails.
Next item, please.
There is an amended motion before council, 1F. It's council member Weiss's motion.
Before we do that, we should go back to page 1. There are some definitions. I think they're relatively non-controversial, but we should adopt them. So we recommend that on page 1, the first item, the definitions be approved. Mr. Deaton?
Just to prove, I recommend approval of the definitions, independent expenditure, member contributions, and non-candidate spending. I don't think it's without objection type.
Open the roll. It's the very first item. Yeah, just definitions. Close the roll.
Abre se voto, cierre se voto.
Next item, there's the Mr. Weiss's motion. Madam Clerk, will you...
It's council member Weiss's motion, asking the city attorney to prepare a draft ordinance, which is based on California Government Code, Section 85310, communication anyways regarding issue ads.
I think that motion, that ordinance, they draft that ordinance, and it would come back to the Rules and Elections Committee for consideration. Open the roll. It's fine. It's just, tabulate the vote. It's not final vote for this. Now, on item 1, I think that the...
There is the committee report that the two...
Which one?
My point is that this came from the chair.
My point is that this came from the chair of the re-apportionment election commission, right, committee, right?
Rules and election.
Rules and election.
Now, we're back to this item one now. This, the, in its entirety, there was a separate motion by Mr. Weiss on issue campaign, which the council just requested the city attorney to draft an ordinance, which will come back to Rules and Election, separate and distinct from item one. I mean, it's the same subject matter. Now we have subject, now we have item one before us, and I think there was a series of changes, and so the city attorney should be instructed to make some modifications and present an ordinance tomorrow. No, maybe a little later than that. As soon as possible.
And then can't...
Excuse me. Right. Committee of our partners should be amended to direct the city attorney to draft an ordinance in conformance with the actions of the council on this item as a committee report.
What is Mr. Weiss's report?
That was a separate instinct from this discussion that we've had.
Which one are we going to go for, the committee report or his?
They were separate and distinct. It's separate. It was separate, Councilman Holden.
My question is that Mr. Weiss was voting no on everything, we were voting yes.
We already voted, the council voted...
It comes back in an ordinance, then which one does it go?
Come back with an ordinance, but that will go through the process that item one just went through, which... Councilman, Mr. Holden, we're okay. Voting on the committee report as amended by council action.
Estamos bien.
We need to do, just to clean everything up, have the city attorney come back with the ordinance that we've done for the last four weeks.
Las últimas cuatro semanas, ocho semanas.
Mr. Weiss filed a motion specifically relative to issue ads. That we're asking for a second ordinance to prepare just to talk about issue ads. That also is going to come back to the committee. So they don't conflict here at all.
Estos no están en conflicto, hay que votar. Terminaremos con este asunto.
Receiving and filing the two ordinances that are on the ballot.
Madam Clerk, will you state what we're going to vote on?
La fiscalía que prepara el ordenanza, la cua, contra las instrucciones, recibir y archivar las ordenanzas que fueron presentadas sin recomendación.
All right, open the roll.
Abre ese voto. Cierre ese voto, toma ese conteo.
Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen eyes.
Very good. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, do you wish to adjourn the special meeting and go back into the regular meeting?
Madam Clerk, and colleagues across the public, this, I believe, concludes the business of the special meeting agenda. So let us adjourn the special meeting, return to the regular meeting. There are a couple matters that can be discussed with pretty quickly here. I think it may be a good idea also to take a five-minute breather at some point soon. Ms. Galanter?
Sera Galanter.
Item twenty-seven.
Item twenty-seven was heard in the Commerce Committee twice, as recently as yesterday. The council must take action by today. And the action recommended by the committee and agreed to by the Department of Water Power Commission, where we hope they get the problems corrected. It's important that the council act. Because if we don't disapprove it today, it is deemed approved with all the problems that are in it.
No, no, lo desaprobamos, no. Controlo problemas, bien, entonces es que el consejo municipal no apruebe, doctora, el comité y que no pruebe, es de acuerdo.
And see nobody on the queue. Madam Clerk, please open the roll.
Abre ese voto.
Ms. Galanter's motion, on item twenty-seven.
Asunto veintisiete, se voto, toma ese conteo.
Fourteen eyes.
For quick, please. And also before, a quick breather. Madam Clerk, would you have a special two that's been circulated?
Temos especial dos que ha sido...
Please.
Yes, it has been special two presented by Councilmember Hahn, seconded by Councilmember Padilla, and the city attorney will speak to the findings.
And three votes are required for this. Since the posting of today's agenda, city staff has learned that there is an impasse in the contract negotiations regarding the janitor's labor union agreement. Immediate need, there is an immediate need to act because the contract expires tomorrow. After findings, if findings are made, council must act on whether to take it out of committee pursuant to Rule 54, and that would require eight votes. And then after that vote, a vote on the substance of motion. According to government code, council must determine whether there is this immediate need to act, and the need for action came to the attention of council after the posting of today's agenda.
Okay, thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Are there members wishing to be heard on the findings? If not, let's proceed with the findings and then hear from members on the subject matter itself. Madam City Attorney, please open the roll on the findings for special two.
Abre ese voto. La recomendación, se voto, toma ese conteo.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, special two is now before us. Ms. Hahn, I was behind a certain time. Ms. Hahn? Special two is now before us, and we recognize Ms. Hahn first on this item, and we do see members of the janitors' union here as well.
All right. Do I read this one? Do I have the floor?
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President, colleagues. As we all know and understand, there's a growing ill and inability in our city for the working men and women to afford decent housing and escalating medical costs. And an essential component to that working class is our janitors.
Estas son las personas acreditadas de mantenimiento de limpieza.
This is probably a group of men and women who are working harder than almost anybody I know tirelessly, and in many cases, all night long. And still struggle to rise above the poverty line. I know council members many nights, even when we stay here a little bit later, six, three, or seven, there's a whole group of people that are just beginning their workday, and work all night.
Que empiezan su día toda la tarde, toda la noche, pero si con mucho regresamos a este edificio y a la distracción siguiente día, es tan bien, muy rico, es un lindo lugar donde le dan trabajar.
There is a way for these underappreciated workers to receive the respect they deserve. And that is provide a decent wage and benefits for those who provide this invaluable service to all of us. The current union agreement covers eight thousand janitors and expires tomorrow. It is time for this council to stand up and show our support for this group by calling for a new, better contract for our janitors. I urge all of you this morning to support this resolution that calls on the commercial real estate industry to recognize these individuals with the respect they deserve. And that is to pay them a fair way, let them organize peacefully, and provide...
Dinero para...
We owe you a tremendous debt of gratitude on a daily basis. Many times, you are the invisible workforce that keeps the buildings and office spaces as a decent place for people every day to do their jobs. And we owe you the same thing by making sure you have a decent way to provide for your families as well. Thank you very much, colleagues.
Hay un representante del grupo, ¿tienes esa presentación?
Yes, before hearing from other members, do we have one representative from the group?
Hay un representante del grupo, ¿tienes esa presentación?
My name is Paula Salvador, trabajo en el 725 Zar Sur Figueroa.
My name is Gerardo Cruz, and I work at 555 West Temple.
Muchas gracias por pasar esta resolución en apoyo de nuestra lucha para mantener nuestros beneficios médicos y para ganar aumentos justos para los janitor de Los Ángeles.
Thank you for passing this resolution in support of our fight to maintain family health insurance and win better wages for L.A. area janitors.
Les agradecemos por reconocer la importancia de buenos trabajos con beneficios en crear en Los Ángeles fuerte.
We thank you for recognizing the importance of good jobs with benefits in making L.A. strong.
Ha tomado mucho para ganar lo que tenemos y para demostrar que los empleadores pueden y deben dar beneficios médicos a la gente que nacen, que hacen que sus negocios funcionen.
It's taken a lot to win what we have and to demonstrate that employers can and should provide health insurance to the people who make their business work.
Con el apoyo de la comunidad, líderes religiosos, otros sindicatos, estudiantes y oficiales políticos como el concejal de la ciudad de Los Ángeles, esperamos lograr un acuerdo justo que incluya beneficios que son completamente pagados por nuestros empleadores y mejor salario sin tener que salir a huelga.
With the support of the community, clergy, other unions, students, and political leaders like the L.A. City Council, we hope to come to a fair settlement that include fully paid employers' health benefits and better wages without being forced to strike.
Una vez más, muchas gracias, y por favor, acompáñenos en Fletcher Brown Square a la 1:30 en el último día antes que se expire nuestro contrato, si se puede.
Thank you again, and please join us across the street at 1:30 at Fletcher Brown Square as we rally the last day before our contract expires, si se puede.
Gracias, thank you for being here.
Muchas gracias por estar aquí, señor García.
Thank you, Mr. President, and gracias por venir, gracias por estar aquí. I want to praise Councilwoman Hahn for her resolution and know that we are in your fight for justice.
Los Unidos, para su lucha de justicia.
And we all want to make sure that you're going to be there. I met with Mike Garcia to make personal phone calls to some of the owners that I know, because I think that many of them want to do the right thing, and they just need a help course. So we're with you together, and I'll see you out there at 1:30. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Mr. President, and just want to thank you all for being here, and we hope we'll be done with council in time to join you for your rally and march. As many have heard before, I had the pleasure of bringing DreamWorks actually to work with the Justice for Janitors campaign and to have my company that I worked for be so strong and supportive to ensure that we had a settlement and talk to some of our colleagues. And you all are the people we count on, individuals who have nowhere else to go and need assistance. We have some business members who have stood out, and they support you, and they call them again to understand the importance of our janitors and others that are working so hard every single day. And many of you, it wasn't impacted by the hall, it did impact when I was at DreamWorks, you know, that people had to take care of things they normally wouldn't have, and we appreciate it all that you do each day. So I just wanted to thank you for your organization, thank you to Mike Garcia, who has been an extraordinary force on this issue, and that we look forward to stand with you as we move ahead in your contract negotiations.
Proceden con su negociación de este contrato.
Mr. Grace. Thank you, Council President. I want to congratulate Councilwomen Hahn, Padilla, and Perry for... My father was a janitor, his noble work that he was able to sustain a family of nine.
Y través de su trabajo pudo mantener a nueve y muchos de ustedes cuando nos arrestaron en Western Woshers, y continuó apoyándoles, espero poder continuar luchando por el justicia que usted merece, como respaldo de nuestra economía, muchas gracias para los trabajadores de Los Ángeles, gracias.
Are there members wishing to be heard?
Nadie más.
If not, I think it's all done. Madam Clerk.
Actora, abre ese voto. Nosotros tenemos que tomar el voto sobre el reglamento 54, de esta moción para arrestar a esto del comité, y entonces estará pendiente, abre ese voto, en reglamento 54, de esta... Abre ese voto y toma ese conteo.
Fourteen eyes.
And now on the motion itself. Please open the roll. Please open the roll.
Abre ese voto.
Please close the roll.
Abre ese voto y toma ese conteo.
Fourteen eyes.
Unanimous vote, four and one, please.
Procedamos.
And we will try to see you at 1:30.
Tenemos que verlos a la media.
Pero como ven, hay mucho más que hacer todavía aquí.
Por lo tanto, tenemos una hora para terminar, muchas gracias por su inspiración.
Muchísima suerte. Thank you. We, members, obviously have some members wanting to attend the 1:30 rally. We have quite a few items called special, we have a lot of work ahead of us.
Muchísimo trabajo todavía pendiente, que tratar de terminar eso en ahora. Procedamos.
There is a special one motion on the desk, do we should make that matter up now?
Hoy es siempre tres, especial uno.
And the city attorney will explain the need to make the findings, that's motion presented by Councilmember Reyes and seconded by Councilmember Gro.
Mr. City Attorney.
Since the posting of today's agenda, city staff has learned that AB 1309 is set for its first policy committee hearing tomorrow in Sacramento, and the Assembly Education Committee...
Odencia del comité, en la asamblea en Sacramento.
AB 1309 would provide cities the ability to work with non-profit and for-profit housing developers.
Con fines de construcción, de sin fin de lucro, y del lucro, por tanto...
Know before tomorrow's committee meeting pursuant to government code, council must first determine that there is a need to take immediate action, and that the need for action came to the attention of council after the posting of today's agenda. If such a finding is made, council may then consider the substance of motion.
Señor presidente, una presentación de esta recomendación, uno. Actor, abre ese voto. La recomendación de fiscalía, abre ese voto. Toma ese conteo. Tres, sí, especial uno, ahora está pendiente, algún miembro que se hace... Presentación de esta moción, señor Reyes.
Thank you, Council President.
Gracias, presidente.
Colleagues, hemos estado trabajando duramente con el distrito escolar, con el estado, la senadora Jackie Goldberg ha visitado aquí en el, como se llama, trabajando con todos los departamentos para que te establezca un chapeje y cómo poder tratar con este gran reto de construir escuelas en áreas donde los niños lo necesitan más, desafortunadamente.
Eso también son lugares donde tenemos viviendas, por tanto, acabamos de hablar, acabamos de terminando con los, hablando de apoyar a los que limpian y poder proveer una manera para que ellos puedan tener viviendas adecuadas, que este proyecto de ley hace nos permitirá una herramienta para organizar estrategias y comisiones dentro de la ciudad para poder construir los tipos de proyectos que pudimos encontrar hace unos cuantos meses con el alcalde cuando un comité de amigos está trabajando junto, es una compañía finínico con la ciudad, con el distrito, para construir viviendas en escuelas en un lugar, un subdistrito, un distrito C de uno. Esto tiene que ver con distritos, en distritos donde este asunto, falta de viviendas existe, esto hace que este tipo de oportunidades donde se necesita más de crecer es que la concentración y el enfoque de la asambleísta corporal ha sido uno para mostrar la pasión como una previa profesora, previa concejala ahora, mismo la asamblea que si tiene una persona de entidad sin fin de lucro. Dos años de parte de este grupo, la oficina del alcalde, él ha trabajado con nosotros en este proceso. Jane Luminio. Between the planning department and the mayor's office, you have the housing department, Sally Rich, working on this. Esto ha sido un grupo enfocado, coordinado, hemos podido crear esta oportunidad, y espero que le da poder ser un voto unánime, debemos de mostrar al comité, la asamblea que es un asunto bastante por el otro, realmente ya los fecha límites se está acercando para los niños que continúan siendo transportados en autobuses, por tanto, me gusta con la soltura, pero te pido un voto unánime sobre este asunto que se rees, hemos recibido una tarjeta de prestación sobre este asunto. Sharon Delugash. Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are Plistal, concejal, and president, they know that we are
Mr. President, colleagues. This is an opportunity for us to resurrect, save, snatch from the jaws of another purpose, and that's Redmond Hall in San Pedro. That is a very humble building that represents the best of the community of San Pedro. It was built in 1950 by George Peck. And it was originally given to the Point Ferment Ladies Association. It was later acquired by Peck and donated to the International Order of Redmond, one of the oldest fraternal organizations in the nation. And the Redmond Society was a patriotic group that operated in San Pedro as a widows and orphans society where members would offer financial assistance to their members should they need it. We would like to preserve that. We would like to include Redmond Hall in the list of historical monuments as a way to really preserve a part of the past of San Pedro. And a really fun, architecturally fascinating building if you would ever like to come down and see this. I would love to show it to you. So I hope you'll support me on this in including it in the list of historical monuments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. LaBanche.
Thank you very much. And thank you, Janice. There's so much history in San Pedro and the area. And it's great to see it recognized. I also want to put another plug in our website for the city. Does not list all our cultural monuments on there. And I think when we vote for it, it'd be only fitting that Council Affairs does upgrade it. And I know Councilmember Parks has his committee recently approved a mass and other descriptions for this visual board up here. Wouldn't it be nice to have a picture of this proposed monument so everybody can see it right now? Anyway, I call for your support. Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. LaBanche. Other members wishing to be heard on this item?
No. After the 23rd, I'll go and press the vote. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote. This is approved. Congratulations, Ms. Hahn. Next matter called special is item 26, also called special by Mr. Holden. Let's hold 26 and 32 on the desk waiting for his return, bringing us to item 36.
That was called special by Councilmember Parks. And 56 was also called special by Councilmember Parks. Those matters can be considered together inasmuch as they're the same two files on the same report. Members without objection, both items 32, excuse me, 36 and 56. Now before us, Mr. Parks.
If we have a staff come up and give a report.
Good morning, councilmembers. My name is Madeline Radcliffe. I'm with the City Administrative Office. The report for you is a request just from the Los Angeles Police Department to amend the contract with Northrop Grumman Mission Systems, formerly TRW, for the ex-project. Amendment 15 includes an increase to the contract of a little over $21,000 for four engineering changes requested by the city and the deletion and deferral of other tasks. In addition, amendment 15 formally acknowledges the name change from TRW to Northrop Grumman Mission Systems. Northrop Grumman has committed to fulfill the obligations engaged in under the TRW contract and will ensure that all of the key personnel working on the project will remain in place. Amendment 15 is an increase to the contract of a little over $15 million for three engineering changes and for Phase 11F, which includes the mobile data system, field reporting software and hardware upgrades and licenses, connections to state and county databases and program management. These tests are part of the original project plan. Amendment 16 also extends the contract with Northrop Grumman for one year through December 2004. The amendments to this contract bring the total amount with Northrop Grumman Mission Systems to a little over $53 million. And funding for these amendments comes primarily from the Proposition M bond fund and will be supplemented by the COPS more federal grant. The amendments have been reviewed and approved by the Board of Police Commissioners and the ex-technical steering committee. And the CAO also recommends approval of both amendments.
This proposal is being reviewed by both the GGS and the public safety. And we ask for an eye vote. This is an ongoing process to upgrade the police department's communication system and provide a significant amount of management information as they develop the system. And so we ask for an eye vote on that.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Other members wishing to be heard on these items, both items 36 and 56.
Mr. Holden.
President, members, maybe the staff can explain. Have you covered that one yet? Item 36 and 56?
We just heard the presentation on it.
Oh, I heard the presentation? Okay, fine. Well, this is authorize a police chief to execute an amendment, 15 contract, that's in 36. In 56, it may be the same situation. And I was concerned, although I don't have it in my book, but I'm concerned about should it be the CAO or should this contract come back to the council and the CAO sign off on it? The amendment to the contract. Authorize the chief police to execute an amendment to 15, amendment 15 to contracts. It's just an integration sort of design. Why would you do that? Maybe Chief Park can explain.
Well, no. The, this contract is originally started with TRW. And now it's a name change to Northrop Grumman. And that's what amendment 15 is. It's just a name change. Amendment 16 is, contains what we refer to as 11F, which is the next phase in a whole series of amendments that we've done to the original base TRW, now Northrop Grumman contract. This part, 11F, let me back up. Northrop Grumman has done all the, all the different tasks under Prop M. They're our integrator. They've built our dispatch facilities. They've, they're in the process of designing and implementing our new dispatch system, which will go in in about eight months from now. And this portion, 11F, is, is a proposal which will, actually, it'll do, it'll do three things. It's going to provide a new switch, switch mechanism, switch hardware, computer hardware, which will allow our mobile data terminals in the black and white vehicles to communicate with our new PrintTrak CAD system, which is coming onboard at the end of the year. So that's the first part of what this will do. Secondly, it's going to provide some software that will run on the black and white MDTs, which will provide field reporting. The officers will be able to complete field reports in their cars, initiate them and complete them, transmit them back to the stations where they can be reviewed by supervisors. And then they can either update them in their, in the station leader on, or the supervisor can kick them back with corrections. So it provides a field reporting software package. Another thing that it provides is ACARS, which we refer to as abducted child alert reporting subsystem. That's like an Amber Alert system that the state has. It allows a citizen whose child has been found missing to transmit that image to the black and white vehicles so that the officers can be in the attempt to locate that child. So it transmits an image. Those are the three main, main components of this amendment, 11F. There's one final amendment which is coming, which will allow the two dispatch centers to communicate together. But this is the piece that we refer to as the mobile piece.
This is contract number 94580, is that correct?
Yes, yes, that's right.
And it increases the amount from $15 million to five, $15 million, $136,000.
Right, to a total amount of 53.
To a total amount. So that's just for this amount? We know in advance that's what it's going to increase, it's going to be? And so his signature, whoever signs, would not obligate the city for additional funds? I mean, what I'm saying, if you started signing off on amendments, what would that do? Could we overrun? Could we have a cost overrun?
This is a fixed firm price amendment to the original base contract. It's covered by Proposition M. It's on.
I know what it's covered by, but it still could be wasting taxpayers' money. And I don't want to make sure we don't do that.
Well, yeah, I, it, there's no, there's no, there's no allowing for an overrun as far as this amendment is concerned. It's a fixed firm price. It's been negotiated. It has deliverables provided, which are required by Northrop Grumman. So we will not be coming back to council for any additional money on this case.
You will not be coming back. Councilmember Parks, this happened to your administration, and if so, we're in the right track here.
We're in the right track. This is a grant, not only COPS more, but also a bond fund that's been a progression of putting 10,000 radios in officers' hands, putting about 2,000, 3,000 MDTs in police cars, building two communications centers, and now it's building the guts of the center so that they'll be upgraded for the next decade or so. So this is well on its way to having a cutting-edge communication system.
So this is one we have expedited in this matter by having the chief sign off?
Well, yeah, then plus, I think we should be aware that the contractors are working without a contract, so they don't, do not slow down the progress of this project. So it's a matter of facilitating it so they can continue to be paid for something they've already began to work on.
The chief of police has signed all the previous amendments.
Oh, I didn't know that. I would have changed it.
Thank you, Mr. Holden, Mr. Parks. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on items 36 and 56. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item, Mr. President. Do you wish to go back to item number 15 that was called special by Councilmember Holden?
No, well, let's keep going to the orders. Holden will have to wait.
Item number 41 was called special inasmuch as there are cards from the public.
Item 41, now before us, is Sheila Bernard, still with us? Is Sheila Bernard on item 41? Ms. Bernard going once, Ms. Bernard going twice.
Sheila Bernard, today, the hat I'm wearing is as a member of the Board of the Grassroots Venice Neighborhood Council. Well, I'm only now beginning to understand the changes that our councilwoman's requesting to this ordinance. I am here only to request that this item be postponed until such time as the neighborhood council can be involved in the discussion, because it's important. We, we are now, a whole new generation of people is trained to be part of city politics and to discuss an issue like this, which deals with a trust fund relative to Venice, something that we need to air publicly. And I'm asking only that our councilwoman take this off calendar for today so that we can discuss it a little further. Thank you.
Thank you very much. This concludes public comment on this item for today. Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I am happy to oblige the greater, the Venice Grassroots Neighborhood Council and, and take this off calendar. But I would like to explain it for those who are here. Members, as you know, every council office now gets, when real property, city property is sold in your district, in our districts, a portion of the money goes to your district, a portion goes to the general fund. Venice, the Venice Beach, was the first area to do that. Venice did it in 1978, but the Venice was done by an ordinance and says it would sunset. So my motion was to say, let's not let it sunset, let it stay in place. I'm happy to let that go to the Grassroots Neighborhood Council, let it stay around. Everyone, the other thing is, as everyone has these real property trust funds that get some money coming to the district by way of sale of property in the district, as the council member by way of a motion says, let's spend some money in CD3 or CD10 that came to that trust fund, it's a council motion and you act on it. In Venice, that's not the case, because it was the first one. It says anytime there's an effort to expend money from it, we've got to ask the city attorney to prepare an ordinance to spend that money. That's complicated, it's troublesome. And so I was looking at this motion, amends that. That's where the motion says delete number five. To five, I said, go and have the city attorney do an ordinance. The other thing we were asking for was that, right now, it can only be used for capital, that property is sold, it can only be used to buy property or build something. There are a lot of requests in the Venice community to accelerate, increase, create nonprofit groups that are doing good things in Venice that may not be capital or may not be property purchased. So that's what this motion does. I'm happy to have, had the opportunity to explain it. And I now request that the matter be taken off calendar, referred back to CD11, where I hope the Grassroots Venice Neighborhood Council will consider it quickly, make any other suggestions they might like to, and bring it back shortly.
Mr. Holden.
No, we have the ethics. Look at this one. How much money you have in that trust fund out there right now?
It's independent, Mr. Holden.
No, no, no. End, hey, you got it. All these nonprofits that you're going to fund and they're going to remember you when you run for election, that you're designee, oh, come on, talk to me. You see, that's what, that's what troubles me. The fact of the matter is that some people are holier than da. You're going to get all this money and you're going to designate the nonprofits. I mean, ordinarily, it was going to the general fund before. Give me, what's the staff? What's the staff report on this?
Mr. Holden, this money goes to the individual council districts, except in Venice, it needs an ordinance to change it rather than just a motion from the councilmembers.
Wait just a minute, hold it, hold it. What they started to do, and I don't have any surplus line in my district, is leave a portion of the monies that's sold in the district, 50%, I think. And Ruth got the first big lump, okay? And the fact of the matter is still there now, now that you are the councilperson. And she didn't give all this money away to nonprofits. She took her time and she spent it properly. Now you're talking about nonprofits even though you're not running for election. Do I have a staff report on this? I want to ask how much money you got out there.
It's, it's being referred back to the council.
Pardon?
We can have that information when it comes back. I'm asking it to be taken off calendar to go to the Grassroots Venice Neighborhood Council.
There's been a motion to continue this matter.
We can continue until a certain date. And during that time period, it'll go to neighborhood council meeting, committee. You'll come back in two weeks, is that what you want?
If, no, it's going not to the neighborhood council committee, it's going to the neighborhood council out in the community. So I don't know when they can meet again to hear it, but as soon as they do, we'll bring it back.
When we continue this, we have to continue to a date specific, so let's.
Why don't we continue for 30 days?
30 days? That'll be May 30th. And in the meantime, neighborhood council will be approached for input and Mr. Holden can get these questions answered.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that, that he can, you just give me a real slush fund. That's the only reason why I raised the issue.
Members, we have a motion to continue this matter for 30 days. Without objection, so ordered. Next item, please.
Item number 47 called special, excuse me, called special by Councilmember Zine. Two votes are required, one to assert jurisdiction and one to veto.
Mr. Zine still with us? There he is. Members, this is item 47.
On this particular item, we made a commitment to the community. They're building a new police station at West Valley. And we made a commitment to the community that we would adhere to here to standard hours. The station is located in a heavily populated residential area. The contractor bypassed my office, went directly to the police commission, and they were not aware of our commitment. They granted a waiver. And I need to assert jurisdiction and try and work out a compromise with the community. If we are going to adjust the hours of construction. The hours are supposed to begin at 7:00 a.m. They want to begin at 6:00 a.m. And they also wanted to work on the weekends. The community was concerned about the construction. And the old station has been demolished. They are in the construction phase. And we want to remain on schedule, but at the same time, we don't want to disrupt the entire community. So that's the reason why I'm asking that we assert jurisdiction on this matter. And I've received information that the commission doesn't have any problem with us doing that and trying to work out a compromise with the community and then come up with some modification that will be appropriate. If in fact, we need to adjust the construction hours at the site of the new West Valley Police Station. That's the request. Mr. State Attorney, we got the findings, I hope.
Yes, the findings. Well, that's the voting to assert jurisdiction as a first vote.
Right, right. And that, that's why we need to do that. If not, then the new hours will cause great disruption to the community and complaints. And we don't need to disrupt the community anymore than it's been disrupted by the construction. But I believe that, once I have a meeting with the community members and explain what we're trying to do, we can come up with a modification that will be satisfactory to all parties. But in this particular case, we were not involved and went directly to the police commission for a waiver. They were not aware of this commitment that we made to the community. So that's why we need to come back. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Mr. Holden?
What am I questioning, Mr. Zine? Are you aware whether or not there's a clause in the contract that says that the contract is going to be finished by a certain date? Yes or no?
No.
Well, there's something you might want to look at. Because if there's a timeframe, then of course, you, by this action, you could very well generate cost overruns.
We were concerned, we were told it's going to take 24 months. And I was told a month or so ago that we were ahead of schedule and on budget. So I haven't been told anything other than that. I have no problem with you, but I think it's one, the matter, you're a consultant with the contract. You assert jurisdiction, but during that time, talk to the commission, talk to the contractor, and see whether or not there's going to be any, any, in addition, a cost to us. And if that's the case, you still want to do this, but where's the money going to come from? Well, the contractor was aware of the restricted hours of construction. And for whatever reason, the contractor decided to go to the commission and get a waiver on that. And the commission was not aware of what commitment. We didn't.
I understand, Mr. President. The contractor responded and was given, the RFP was given the contract. He knew the hours of work, seven to nine, or seven to seven, or something like that.
Correct.
And so then he's got to be caught holding the bag. But anyway, that's something, that's a matter to be discussed.
Well, that's what I plan to do, because we found out about this as the time was running. And if we don't make a decision to assert, then that new time goes in, which is going to cause more problems.
I want to raise a question, because I never thought you'd say, do anything against the police commission.
No, I'm not, except the commission supports what we're doing on this. They were basically duped.
They were not here, no, no, you can't say that about the commission.
They were basically duped by the.
You know what? Mr. President, remember, I'm going to sit down, but that's not the first time they were duped.
On this item, Mr. LaBanche?
I, I did get, I did get from the liaison that they're not opposing what we're trying to do here. That's, that the commission's not opposing it. Mr. LaBanche?
No, I just got to, some of the questions they made, some very good points on that. But you're going to meet with the people, they're trying to find out some resolution. It's always difficult during a construction project. And I'm familiar with the location, so I have.
You've answered some questions, too, so I appreciate that. The entire area is residential, everything's residential. There's no business there other than the station, it's all residential. So we allow Saturday construction? Well, that's part of the issue. They want to expand the hours to Saturday. Basically, they want to just modify the hours and go along with it. We need to find out the particular reason why. And then meet with the community. I'm not saying the community won't support it, but they haven't made consulting. And that was it.
Thank you. Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to clarify that Mr. Zine is absolutely right, which is why we have to second this. And obviously, now, when the police commission was made aware, it wasn't only commitments that were made. This actually, construction project was issued a zoning administrator's conditional use to allow the construction to go forward. And in that, in that conditional use, under conditions, they had agreed that. So for the police commission to waive it, they were in violation of a planning action. Mr. Reyes would know that says this is what was done. So that's why the commission said, wait a second, somebody just came in and asked us. Our staff, their own staff didn't tell them they couldn't do this. But that's why we're back to the planning department and obviously the council. So Mr. Zine is handling this in a very appropriate manner. But it was, it was clearly something pre-arranged, pre-done, in terms of satisfying the community as to how it would be constructed. And the zoning administrator had, had pined in and chinned in and given these rules and these hours that made sense. Now the council district will look again to see whether or not the community can persuade that there are some benefits or not, looking at it differently. If not, the rules as they were put in place by the CAO.
Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Let's proceed with the vote. proceed with the vote. The first vote is to assert jurisdiction. Please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is done. Forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number 48 called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, item 48.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Maybe some legislative advocate can come up and explain this bill?
This is a Nakano bill that would expand the MTA board membership by two. The recommendation is to oppose the bill because it would dilute the city's authority essentially on the MTA board.
Right. Mr. President, members, this is a bill we should oppose. However, it's a good chance that we could use it as a vehicle to correct some problems which now exist with the appointment of MTA board members. I'm sure there are members there who are very, very busy and cannot attend every meeting, especially the mayor. To require the mayor of the city of Los Angeles during budget times to sit there all day long is some, it's really quite giving up a precious time for the city of Los Angeles. He has not asked me to introduce the motion or an amendment, but I would say we should oppose this bill in its entirety. However, we should ask Mr. Nakano to use 1652, AB 1652, as a vehicle to permit the mayor of the city of Los Angeles, at least to appoint an alternate that can serve at least in a fiscal year, half, maybe six months, six times a year. Whereas if he chooses to be there 12 times, that's fine. But if he can't be there, the city should not go unrepresented. And I think if we can use this as a vehicle, I'll get in touch with Mr. Nakano myself and say the bill's dead, except however, I would like for you to incorporate this amendment and use this as a vehicle to solve a problem which I think is obvious to all of us. Oppose the bill, less amended to give the mayor the authority to appoint an alternate that would meet, represent him at least six times a year. I think they meet 12 times a year, MTA?
Monthly.
Right, at least six times a year, if he chooses that to be the case. And then oppose it otherwise. Do I have a second? Anybody paying attention?
Mr. Parks seconds that motion. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Let's consider this matter as amended by Mr. Holden, without objection. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 48. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved as amended. Next item, please.
Item number 55 called special by Councilmember Zine. There are two reports on the file and motion is required.
Mr. Zine, item 55, we do need a motion.
Oh, 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 I'm sorry. I'm sorry, okay. We're going to have a, Mr. Mike Carey, our city clerk, give us a display of a new system that we want to implement.
Show my technology prowess.
There we go.
This is a system that we want to implement.
Let me explain what we're going to attempt to do this afternoon. This is an electronic council file. Basically, what you will see in the future would be when you click on an agenda item, you will be able to see the underlying documents. I told Councilman Zine I was not going to sit in front of the personnel committee or present the full council and argue that the additional staff required to implement this would rise to the level of some of the other budget priorities. So I would request that you basically adopt the personnel committee report and send that to budget and finance and let budget and finance. If there are additional funds available, we can move forward with funding this project. This project cannot be done without additional staff because we are virtually not eliminating anything in terms of our business. The other piece of this, once it starts, I hope. Councilwoman Misakowski asked us to develop a voting system that would be displayed on council file index, which would record the votes by each member of the council so that you could literally search by council member, by item number, by a variety of inquiries and get votes on individual items. Votos para asuntos individuales como. That system will not require additional staff. We plan on implementing that on July 1st unless the world falls apart. Salvo si el mundo se des. I got to have a second, according to Mr. Allison. Ready? Basically...
... pero de esta plaza tiempo hablé con la comisión, hablé con los concejales de la comisión. Hablé con el concejal 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 de la comisión.
Well, that's what I plan to do, because we found out about this as the time was running. And if we don't make a decision to assert, then that new time goes in, which is going to cause more problems.
I want to raise a question, because I never thought you'd say, do anything against the police commission.
No, I'm not, except the commission supports what we're doing on this. They were basically duped.
They were not here, no, no, you can't say that about the commission.
They were basically duped by the...
You know what, Mr. President, remember, I'm going to sit down, but that's not the first time they were duped.
Eso es lo primero que han sido engañados.
On the side, Mr. LeBange?
I did get, I did get from the liaison that they're not opposing what we're trying to do here. That's, that the commission's not opposing it. Mr. LeBange?
Some of the questions they made, some very good points on that, but you're going to meet with the people that are trying to find out some resolution. It's always difficult during a construction project. And I'm familiar with the location, so I have...
Muchos años soy familiar con este proyecto.
You've answered some questions, too, so I appreciate that.
The entire area is residential, everything's residential, there's no business there other than the station, it's all residential, so...
Were you allowed Saturday construction?
Permitirá construcción durante el sábado.
Well, that's part of the issue. They want to expand the hours to Saturday.
Trabajar el sábado.
Basically, they want to just modify the hours and go along with it.
Muchos tenemos que darnos cuenta. La razón, la porqué, y lo que nos dijo que la comité no lo apoyará, pero no sé. Han hablado con la comité de la comunidad, pero...
Thank you.
Ms. Misakowski?
Thank you, Mr. President, I just want to clarify that Mr. Zine is absolutely right, which is why we had to second this, and obviously now when the police commission was made aware, it wasn't only commitments that were made. This actually, construction project was issued a zoning administrator's conditional use to allow the construction to go forward. And in that, in that conditional use, under the conditions, they had limits that the community had agreed. So for the police commission to waive it, they were in violation of a planning action, Mr. Reyes would know that says this is what was done. So that's why the commission said, wait a second, somebody just came in and asked us, our staff, their own staff didn't tell them they couldn't do this. But that went back to the planning department, the community, and obviously the council. So Mr. Zine is handling this in a very appropriate manner, but it was, it was clearly something pre-arranged, pre-done, in terms of satisfying the community, as to how to be constructed, like we do any other construction project, and the zoning administrator had, had pined in, chinned in, and given these rules and these hours that made sense. Now the council district will look again, see whether or not the community can persuade that there are some benefits or not, looking at it differently. If not, the rules as they were put in place by the CAO.
Have the members wishing to be heard?
Son vigentes, mucho miembros, ¿no?, actuales.
Let's proceed with the vote.
Two votes need to be taken.
First vote is to serve jurisdiction, please open the roll.
Refirmar la decisión, abra ese voto, cierre ese voto y tabule ese conteo.
Eleven eyes.
Once, six.
Jurisdiction is asserted.
Refirmar la decisión.
Mr. Zine has a motion to veto the commission action. Please open the roll.
Delegación de la comisión, abra ese voto, cierre ese voto y tabule ese conteo.
Eleven eyes.
Once, si.
That is done.
Se llevará a cabo.
Forthwith, please. Next item.
Item number forty-eight, called special by Councilmember Holden.
Mr. Holden, item forty-eight.
Estos son 48.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Maybe some legislative advocate can come up and explain this bill?
This is a Nakano bill that would expand the MTA board membership by two. The recommendation is to oppose the bill, because it would dilute the city's authority essentially on the MTA board.
Right. Mr. President, members, this is a bill we should oppose. However, it's a good chance that we could use it as a vehicle to correct some problems which now exist with the appointment of MTA board members. I'm sure there are members there who are very, very busy and cannot attend every meeting, especially the mayor. To require the mayor of the city of Los Angeles during budget times to sit there all day long is, it's really quite giving up a precious time for the city of Los Angeles. He has not asked me to introduce the motion or an amendment, but I would say we should oppose this bill in its entirety. However, we should ask Mr. Nakano to use 1652, AB 1652, as a vehicle to permit the mayor of the city of Los Angeles, at least to appoint an alternate that can serve at least in a fiscal year, half, maybe six months, six times a year, whereas if he chooses to be there 12 times, that's fine. But if he can't be there, the city should not go unrepresented. Now, I think if we can use this as a vehicle, I'll get in touch with Mr. Nakano myself and say the bill is dead, except however, I would like for you to incorporate this amendment and use this as a vehicle to solve a problem which I think is obvious to all of us. Oppose the bill, let's amend it to give the mayor the authority to appoint an alternate that would represent him at least six times a year. I think they meet 12 times a year, MTA?
Monthly.
Right, at least six times a year, if he chooses that to be the case, and then oppose it otherwise. Do I have a second? Anybody paying attention?
Mr. Parks seconds that motion. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's consider this matter as amended by Mr. Holden, without objection. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item forty-eight. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That is approved as amended. Next item, please.
Item number fifty-five, called special by Councilmember Zine, there are two reports on the file, a motion is required.
Mr. Zine, item fifty-five, we do need a motion.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay. We're going to have a... Mr. Mike Carey, our city clerk, give us a display of a new system that we want to implement.
Show my technology prowess.
There we go.
Este sistema que queremos implementar.
Let me explain what we're going to attempt to do this afternoon. This is an electronic council file.
Archivo electrónico del Consejo Municipal.
Basically, what you will see in the future would be when you click on an agenda item, you will be able to see the underlying documents.
Podrán ver los documentos.
That make up that council file.
Relevante este archivo del Consejo Municipal.
I told Councilman Zine I was not going to sit in front of the personnel committee or present the full council and argue that the additional staff required to implement this would rise to the level of some of the other budget priorities, so I would request that you basically adopt the personnel committee report and send that to budget and finance and let budget and finance, if there are additional funds available, we can move forward with funding this project. This project cannot be done without additional staff, because we are virtually not eliminating anything in terms of our business. The other piece of this, once it starts, I hope... Councilwoman Misakowski asked us to develop a voting system that would be displayed on council file index, which would record the votes by each member of the council, so that you could literally search by council member, by item number, by a variety of inquiries and get votes on individual items. How a council member has voted over the past several years. That system will not require additional staff. We plan on implementing that on July 1, unless the world falls apart.
Salvo si el mundo se...
I got to have a second, according to Mr. Allison. Ready? Basically, the electronic council file would be your ability, your staff's ability, neighborhood councils, the public, to literally click on an item. If it's on one of our agendas or a referral calendar, whenever we get the item, and look and see the underlying document that that council file is moving forward with. We would attempt to include CAO reports, all the departmental reports, any report that came forward, including council motions for the public and your staff to view as the item moves through the council. The intent, and this is, technology is not the problem for my office, it's the resources that we need to be the gatekeeper for the 50-plus departments that feed the council information. The intent, if this system does work, ITA and the clerk will attempt to export this system to the boards and commissions and get a similar look throughout the city. So what I'm going to ask Greg Allison, the head of our systems division, is to quickly go through the demonstration so you can take a look at the subject matter.
Okay, to begin with what we've done, the minor change is that from the city council agenda list, we just pick up the calendar, just as you do today. And the city calendar will, agenda will load into Adobe Acrobat Reader, which is the city's standard viewer for PDF files for the city's web postings. This looks very similar to where we have it today. The only difference is that on the left-hand side, you'll see these blue numbers, which is our council file numbers, and those are hyperlinked to online council documents associated with that council file. So for example, if you click, click on this particular one, it will search the system and bring up all the council file, electronic documents associated with that council file. In this particular case, there's one document, this is just a sample, but over the life of a council file, there would be many documents here. The elected official or the customers out on the web could just click on the document, bring up the electronic file and view it, print it. Whatever they like. That's one way. The second way to get into the online council file is through our council file index system. And if somebody puts in a council file number and searches it, just as they do today on our internet, a list will come up. And this list is somewhat modified. On the left, we still have the same file summaries that we've had before, where the council public services provides a summary listing of the events that have taken place with that council file. But what we've added now are two columns on the right-hand side. We have online documents. And that brings up, again, the online documents associated with that council file. So those are the two ways to get in. One is through the calendar by clicking on it within the agenda. The other is through the council file index by clicking in the online documents column. Mike, did you want me to show the votes, or two? We've also added on the right-hand side, council votes, there's two ways to get into council votes. These are the results of the votes that come in from each council meeting. Those are imported into the city clerk's environment, and we make those available on the internet. So what we've done is associated the council votes to the council files. So if we click on council votes here on this council file, it will display all of the votes that had taken place in council committee related to that council file. In this particular example, we've had two votes on this council file, both happened to be on September 10. Fourteen eyes, zero no's, one absent. This is a summary list, and it can be printed on the fly by anybody who accesses this internet system. To see details, you just click on the folder on the left-hand side. And it'll bring up the details about the meeting date, what the council file number is, a brief description. And we have a field here if there was a council district that it pertained to in particular. And then on the right, we see a detail listing of how each of the council members voted. That also can be reported and printed. So we have a detailed view as well as a summary view. And we have, the other way to get in to the council votes system would be a separate link altogether, where we provide a full-function search feature, which you can search by council meeting dates, date ranges, the type of meetings they were, what district it might pertain to, or anything that a council member voted on, past members, whether it was yes or no, various options. In this case, we're just going to click on the September 10 meeting date and use that as our search and submit that. And this brings up all the items that were voted on on the September 10, 2002 meeting. And these are listed, these can be printed out. And once again, it's a summary view. If you click on the folder on the left, you'll get the detailed view. And again, that can be printed out. And used. For reference. And those are the two ways to get in. Thanks, Mike.
As I indicated, the voting system will implement with additional staff, the council file, the electronic council file. That I'm recommending through Councilman Zine to have that go to budget and finance. And if it rises to the level of funding in this year's budget, fine. If it doesn't, the system is there to be implemented when we can get the additional resources.
Personnel do you estimate?
Cuántas personas.
Personal personnel for your department would...
Not for the rest of the, not with this system, because what we're doing, with this system, we're taking electronic reports or scannable documents from departments, making sure that they match the version that either came in directly from the department or came in directly from the mayor's office, and then doing this linking process. So it'll just be two, counseling. And after, I think we get it implemented, we should, I can't really tell you whether we're going to need two people to continue the program. But initially, we've got to sort this out and make sure that we get the correct documents against the correct file. Okay.
So I would move the personnel committee report. Thank you. Mr. President.
Este report de...
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this item? Councilmember Hahn?
Lo conseja al Hahn.
I think she stepped out for one second, so...
I just want to add one more thing.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Zine.
Our city clerk, mild-mannered city clerk, does a tremendous job by keeping all the files, the paper flow, how he keeps up with his staff. He's really to be commended. You do it diligently every day, and it's always perfect.
It's always fun.
It's always fun, it's always perfect. So I want to congratulate you for doing the fine job you do every single day, and you're also your staff, your crew.
Primarily the staff. I just take the blame.
They got a good leader.
Thank you for taking the blame. Mr. LeBange?
I just wanted to second what the city clerk said. It's his staff that does the good job, right? Not me.
El personal del señor Carey es el que hace el trabajo, muy bueno. Gracias señor LeBange, que se ha puesto a usted de nuevo para reelección, ¿verdad? Es impresionante, yo he tenido una gran experiencia con él en los años, trabajando con Mike, que me da mucho gusto. Que es el actor municipal, también, todo su personal y su tecnología que está presente aquí es lo que estamos tratando de prestar, que más personas pueden entender lo que estamos haciendo, y también quiero dar las gracias a todos, a la marid, a todas las personas que están aquí, los que hacen el trabajo del señor actor municipal aquí para el actor municipal.
And by the way, wait just a second. There will be a hard historic file that will be...
Yes, this will not eliminate.
Right.
Sí, sí, habrá, habrá documentación.
Because what's so fabulous about our city clerk, this is a technology, but in the archives and Pyrotech...
También es un fabuloso de este actor, pero los archivos, en documentos, pueden encontrar documentos con más de 150, 200 años escritos en español en el año pasado. Muchos colegas de esos años, esto es increíble.
And an airtight special compartment there that preserves it for the future for the archives. So we want to have someone look up about that design in 2012, they can.
Indeed, we hope they include a photo. All right, so... Any other members wishing to be heard? If we can please open the roll on the item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Once, si.
Thank you very much, that item is approved.
Gracias señor Carey.
Next item, please.
Item number 57, called special by Councilmember LeBange.
Thank you, this is just a river cleanup this weekend, and everybody's been involved, so I want to thank Reyes' leadership on the ad hoc committee and all the members. But we're all getting up, and Eric, you're involved in cleaning up the river. Thank you for an I vote. Thank you, Mr. Perdia, for making the ad hoc committee in the first place that included Wendy, Jan Perry, Eric, and my son.
Just to clarify, an I vote is for clean river?
I vote for clean river.
Colleagues, the item is before us, also, Madam Clerk, if you'll make sure that 36 and 56 go forthwith. Please open the roll on the item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote. Clean river is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 58, called special by Councilmember LeBange, there is an amending motion that has been distributed, and there is also an amendment, excuse me, an ordinance that the city attorney has prepared.
Thank you, if I can ask Mr. Dean to speak to it, please. This is just, Mr. President, members of the committee, the council, this is a trust fund for the observatory, another to contribute money to the refurbishment of the observatory. The amending motion is one that provides until the ordinance is in place, instructions to the controller what to do with the money. They're prepared to put, I think, three and a half or four million dollars in immediately, and that allows us to get the ordinance in place, and then also have something, a process. So we recommend approval. Thank you, I vote, I thank the friends of the observatory.
Any other colleagues wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you please open the roll on the item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Once, si.
That item is approved.
And the ordinance goes over one week, to May 6.
Okay, we didn't have the...
Tiene pendiente hasta el 6 de mayo, una semana.
Till May 6. Next item, please, Madam Clerk.
Item number 59 was called special by Councilmember Misakowski, and the amendment has been distributed. This is actually a subsequent motion, it's just got a technical correction that the city legislature has put forward. This is allowing a non-imposition of penalties to a specific date on the police permit fees that were approved. So this just clarifies the date that we put in, so that no penalties are charged.
Okay.
Yes, for now.
Thank you for that clarification. We have the, item is amended before us, no other colleagues wishing to be heard. Madam Clerk, if you'll please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That item is approved.
Excuse me, Mr. President, there actually were 12 members present when item 58 was voted on. Would council wish to revote on that so that ordinance can be adopted?
As we consider that one, and open the roll again on that item. Close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Once, si.
That is approved and not held over for a week.
Y no será demorado por semanas, la ordenanza ha sido aprobada.
Mr. President, there's been a request on to continue some of the closed session matters, 54, A, B, C, and E, to continue those matters for one day to April 30.
Without objection, colleagues, we'll continue those closed session items. Next item.
There is just some matters on the desk, Councilmember 15 was called special by Councilmember Holden.
Councilwoman Holden, item 15. If you'll press your button, please.
Report.
My name is John Henchel, I'm with the CAO's office. Item number 15 is the request for authority to issue MICLA bonds to fund the purchase of the Marvin Browdy San Fernando Valley Constituent Service Center, up to $34 million, and also $2 million for the design of the new police headquarters facility. Both of these projects have been previously approved for MICLA funding by the city council and the mayor, and we are here with the legal documents required to be approved to complete this financing transaction.
It's the same police station that Mr. Zine was speaking of, this is a different one, that's already under construction?
No, it's a different one.
How many police stations are you going to have out there?
No, this is the police headquarters building that the council authorized to move forward and to place into MICLA.
And you're going to spend $2 million for the design work for this new police headquarters?
Yes, architectural and design.
What is the estimated cost for the police headquarters?
The total building has not been totally determined yet, but I understand that the cost would be between 215 and 285 million dollars.
Have we spent the money? Have we approved the MICLA bonding for that?
Yes, we have. It was approved, I believe, about a month ago, it came from council.
So why didn't we include the $2 million in that package?
We included to add it to the next MICLA financing, not the exact $2 million, but to move forward. We were instructed to move forward with the project.
And this $2 million for 30 years, the cost of taxpayers, how much money, total?
I believe that the total amount would be 4.3 million.
How much?
4.3 million with debt service.
To services debt would be 4.3 million, to borrow 2 million.
Approximately.
So you'd be paying back over $6 million altogether.
No, we'll be paying back a total of $4.3 million, which includes $2 million in principal and approximately $2.3 million in interest over a 30-year period.
30 years. Well, where do we go?
Thank you, Mr. Holden, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Jerry, I just wanted to clarify, what station are we talking about? You say headquarters, are we replacing Van Nuys, or are we talking about the other station, 19?
This is the new police headquarters building in the downtown civic center area.
Oh, downtown, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry. I don't think that it's exactly been decided where yet, and I think that study is out, but this is for the design cost.
I will make one clarification also, the $2 million is not expected to cover the entire design costs of the facility. That could be as high as $10 million over time, but this is what is needed to get going at this point in time.
Okay, thank you for those clarifications. Any other colleagues wishing to be heard?
I hope so.
Okay, colleagues, Councilmember Zine?
I just have a question, up to $10 million to design a facility?
That's my understanding.
Don't we have city...
Bureau of Engineering has released RFP, I think, to retain a design team. There should be someone here from our office who can speak to that.
This is just the first phase of this. This is the first phase for the actual design.
This is for First and Alameda?
It's not clear yet. Right now, there's currently a study that is on the street to see where is the best place to do it. And so the municipal facilities committee is still...
So why would we design a facility when we don't know where we're going to put it?
The council did approve, citing it on First and Alameda, on the old Mangrove site. I mean, exactly where on the site, we're still looking at. But the design money now is being approved to award a contract to begin some of the design features. It's not uncommon on design to have it between, you know, 5% and 10% of the total cost of the project, so it would not be unusual to have 10 to 15 to even 20 million in design costs at the end of the day.
And then it's going to be a $32 million?
32.
$285 million.
$285 million.
Right.
That's one of our estimates, yes.
So this is the new Parker Center, which doesn't include the new Metropolitan Jail. That's a separate, or is that part of it?
No, that's separate, that's Q-funded, and that is, the facilities may be connected, but the funding sources are different.
So the administrative part of Parker Center is what we're talking about?
That's right.
And then they're going to design a facility and decide what's going to be in that facility, as far as administrative or any field operations or special detective operations?
Exactly. And the size of the building, which units are in that building versus spread throughout the city, et cetera.
And then in the meantime, we're looking at other facilities to move personnel out of Parker Center?
Correct, we're also looking at buying a building to temporarily relocate Parker Center while the new building is being built.
And the term to complete the project of the new Parker Center, five years, 10 years?
Four years, once design is completed, so probably about four and a half years to build it and to move in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Councilmember LeBange?
Just, if any, how much general fund money is involved in this over the course of time?
MICLA financing is all general fund.
All general fund, so we all pay for this all the time?
Yes.
No, I mean, I'm just reading from what my colleagues have told me about the budget crisis coming forward, and I know we've had past discussions, I don't want to throw any curveballs, but if you're skilled, you could hit curveballs, as they say. And I'm concerned, because I've talked before, if we were restoring City Hall East, Mr. Dean, you're on the municipal committee, right? You're restoring City Hall East for needs and fire protection. I again said, if we, because if it's general fund money and we're going to go into a decade more of budget crisis, could police and fire headquarters be built in City Hall East? Could we convert part of Piper Technical Center, especially the second floor, which has a high-level ceiling, it could be two floors, and you could probably get 50 or 60, I don't know, 80,000 square feet developed in there. I don't want to throw a curveball in it, but if you're telling me, and I hear from members, and I got a call from our chairman of the finance committee that we're moving into a budget crisis of multiple years, that the general fund's going to be tapped heavy for this, I'm concerned about it when there's options, I think. I'd like a new headquarters, I like headquarters. I like the Marvin Browdy Center and what we're doing out in Van Nuys, very important, but... we're doing out in Van Nuys, very important, but I'm concerned, so if you could share with me your thoughts.
Interested in hitting curveballs as well. The situation, I think, though, is that if you did City Hall East for fire and police, fire will be in the, as we will be moving them to the 16th, 17th, and 18th floors of City Hall East. The police department could partially be moved into the rest of City Hall East. The difficulty is, then we would have to move the controller, the city attorney, the city administrative office, ITA, into either lease quarters or into other purchased.
What about City Hall Far East, which was talked about in the early part of Richard Rude's administration? Do you remember that? Do you remember that, Cindy? Yeah, okay, so you remember it.
That was either a curveball that we decided to take, or we didn't hit, one of the two, I'm not sure.
I think they passed on it. They walked on it.
But in any event, we didn't build it.
I know.
And I think right now that the proposal for the temporary relocation of Parker Center is that we would, if we can get the price right, is that we would move people out of Parker, police out of Parker Center. Once the new Parker Center is completed, then we would be able to backfill into that building. People are currently in lease quarters, and that would be cheaper. And I think long-term, now, in this, in Parker Center, MICLA funds, the large amount of MICLA funds or the general fund, the hit on the general fund for Parker Center probably is more in the three to four-year timeframe as opposed to the next couple of years, and I think the crucial time on the budget is the next, is the next couple of years.
All right, well, I just wanna look at this closely again, to look at other options, continually, because this is the good thing, we're moving people eventually out of Parker Center, this is gonna pay for that. The 2 to 10 million dollar funding for study is not on new Parker Center, but it is on the?
No, it's on new Parker, it's the design of new Parker Center.
Okay.
We will be coming back if we believe the other makes sense, depending on the cost that we can for a new building, an existing building, but a new location, and whether or not that financially makes sense, and it'll, and that is potentially a drain on the general fund in a much quicker timeframe.
I would look at that also, but look at Piper Tech and those floors and the space, and remove the parking and make a structure next to the Santa Fe Railroad line, and then you have the opportunity to maybe put more in there. Thank you for answering my question.
That would not be without a general fund impact, though.
I understand that, but maybe it all works out from the end.
Thank you, Mr. Labange, Ms. Perry.
For the edification of those listening, just let me clarify one point. The selection of a final site for a proposed new police facility has yet been made or has not been made yet?
Tentatively been talked about at First and Alameda, but what we have, the city has engaged a consultant to review what would be appropriate for that site, and what we might or might not be able to do, and what parking, other things for the community, and emergency operations center, et cetera.
Okay, and I think it's important to note that the property of which you speak is in the midst of a very burgeoning, increasingly more densely populated residential community of loft housing. It's the original loft district, but rapidly becoming a high-profile location, not only for new housing and new residential facilities, but for the Southern California Institute of Architecture, and there's begun to be a spate of restaurants and amenities for the neighborhood, and as we move forward in this process, I think it's important to note that whatever, if something is built there by the city, that it should have community benefit, community facilities, recreational, and otherwise, and since it is the last assembled piece of land in that area, we should also be mindful of the need to build some workforce housing in the area. And I'd like to see that contemplated. And as for the other controversy that I know we're all thinking of, the jail, we will present that to the public and see what comes back. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Misakowski.
I agree with what's been said. I think obviously we did tentatively identify this site, it's appropriate right now to take some MICLA money, start doing some preliminary design work. It may reveal some information, but it clearly can help incorporate the kinds of things that Ms. Perry talked about in a large site. It's what else is going on in the neighborhood, you don't want something that's gonna go in there that is gonna turn its back on the neighborhood, but that's front-end money on a site that we've identified that we want, to start designing and looking at options that I think this will give us and some flexibility along the way. So I ask for an eye vote.
Thank you, Councilmember Misakowski. Chair recognizes Councilman Zine.
One point of clarification, we currently own First and Alameda?
Yes, we do.
The entire?
Yes, the parking fund owns it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Zine, Councilmember Holden.
Well, I'm not going to, if you don't know where you're gonna build this police station, division, whatever, headquarters, and you're saying you're gonna hire an architect, I mean, that is gonna have some configuration and some plans that coming up with, I don't know, it's like, how do you do that? How can you design a concept to fit the footprint, and you don't know anything about the footprint, the area in which you're going to put this? How can you do that?
Well, Councilman, to some degree, you pretty well have to. Now, the council has tentatively looked at the First and Alameda site, but in order to make a final determination, you have to go through the secret clearances and do the I.R.s and studies and other things, and in order to do that, you've gotta design the facilities that you're proposing to be there. So, no, a final decision isn't being made, but what this money will be allocated to do is to do preliminary design work so that we can do the impact studies and bring back to the council a final decision on where the facility will be located.
You gotta have some idea where you're gonna put this, so you could do the impact study. I mean, if you can put it in a zoo and say, let's design it for the zoo, well, you know only animals are gonna be there. Come on.
We have tentatively, the council has tentatively said First and Alameda, and we, we're in the process of looking at that site and looking at where different, how many, what kind of facilities would fit on it, one, and what it might look like, and also the nature of the?
Please, Mr. Deaton, site control is the answer. Get site control.
We have site control.
Well, then let's design the building there. If you have site control, what are you talking about?
We will be, if, we've gotta go some other, some preliminary steps, we also want, it's an opportunity, I've been saying, to do it the right way.
Look, you know what it is, is let's hurry up and waste some money. We have site control at First and Alameda, and we may decide not to do it there after you come up with a design concept, you know, and then you move it someplace else, like you did with the communication system here. You had it in the valley, you moved it downtown, I mean, to Westchester, spent all that money out there, then you moved it downtown, across the street. And how much money and time was lost in doing that? Is that right? Remember that?
I remember that.
How much money did we spend on that junk process?
Several, several dollars. I think because of the, we don't have 12, it would be probably appropriate that we continue this one day?
You wanna continue it?
Continue it one day.
Fair fine. Maybe you get some minutes.
I think we'll have 12 people momentarily, if that matters. So we can hold it on the desk.
I'll wait a moment.
Okay. Let's hold that on the desk, Madam Clerk, and go on to the next item. Mr. Holden, item number 26.
Another report here. We were given 16.5 billion dollars from this A.G.
That's right.
That was very nice. And we were told that the council participated in appropriations of the funding. What does this report say?
Well, the council did instruct our office to report back on potential uses of the 16 and 1/2 million dollars.
Have you done that?
Which was before you, it was in Budget Committee last week.
Where's the Budget Committee recommending? What did you report? Tell us.
Budget Committee recommended that.
No, you tell us what you reported.
Okay, we provided a variety of projects adding up to 16 and 1/2 million dollars. They include the Griffith Park Observatory, includes a variety of other projects. Okay, the Highland Park Community Center, Studio City Golf and Tennis, street improvements and greening projects in Council District 3, the Robertson Rec Center, Major League Baseball, the Denker Rec Center, St. Viviana's Housing Project, Queen Anne Rec Center, West LA Civic Center improvements, street improvement projects in CD 12, Barnes &amp; Del Park, Phase 2 improvements to El Pueblo and the Rosecrans Recreation Center gym.
So what did the Finance Committee recommend?
They recommended noting and filing this report, and instructed that our office in connection with the budget incorporate this into the other discussions with the budget.
You wanna respond to that, because it's important for us to know. Why did you do that? Mr. President, colleagues, this report is recommended as note and file from Budget and Finance Committee, because at the time that it was considered, it was brought to our 10th, that the funds, 16.5 million, was incorporated in the proposed budget that we're reviewing right now in Council Chambers after this meeting. So, the 16.5 is part of balancing O3, O4, and is not available for O2, O3 expenditures. Then that's how to circumvent the will of the council. The council instructed the C.L.A. to report back to the council. Now, anything that's not acceptable? And should have been reported out as such by the committee, Finance Committee. Mr. Holden, I'm sure I'm next on the speaker queue, but you push the button. Well, colleagues, we've already covered this committee, but I was prepared to share with you that, the recommended allocations expenditures under the C.L.A.'s report are not gonna be contemplated on the council floor, because the funds that would cover those expenditures would therefore create a gap in the O3, O4 budget, since the mayor's office programmed that money into the O3, O4 budget. So we recommend that if you're interested in pursuing those one-time capital expenditures that were reported in the C.L.A. report, that you must and should come to the council budget process to advocate for your, for your projects. Right, I went to the C.L.A. here, because C.L.A. I think worked with the mayor, as he put together his budget, or is that true or not? If so, then the mayor should have been made aware of the fact what the decision was of the council when they voted to accept that agreement, stipulate agreement from the state percent of people, where they will relieve them of the credit, letter of credit, which is about 70-plus million dollars. Mr. Holden, at this point, everyone has, in Budget and Finance Committee, accepted the basic principle that the mayor's budget as it stands right now is a proposal. I was corrected twice by two committee members when I kept on using the word that the money was spent, because since the council has not approved the mayor's proposed budget, it is technically not spent. So, two of my colleagues presented me and informed me that the proposed expenditures, 16.5 million dollars from 16.5 million dollars of this, positively, are proposals, and that the council during the budget process can redistribute those funds. Because this is an arrangement which was made, which the mayor signed off on, which was recommended that they approve, but permit that the center of this, which was above 70 million dollars, was the land that we acquired, and the terrain that we bought from the park. Now, seeing me at least, the mayor's office should have been aware of that, and the mayor should have been informed. And they were negligent, negligent, the mayor's office, I know that they could not use the budget, but was to come back to the council for the council's consideration. To the members of the council, and the party of someone who made that recommendation suggestion.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. President, colleagues, I would just simply encourage you to review the C.L.A.'s report, and if anything is on that list that you wanna advocate for, the opportunity is before you're doing the budget process, and simply want to note and file the report under those circumstances.
Okay. Colleagues, we now have this item before us. Not to file. Thank you. Any other colleagues wishing to be heard? Not, let's open the roll on the item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That is noted and filed. Next item, please, Mr. Park. Item number 32, called special by Councilmember Holden. Mr. Holden, item number 32.
I'm sure we have somebody staff here. I spend all this money?
Lisa Johnson, City Administrative Officer, the request is for the Community Redevelopment Agency is requesting authority to execute contracts and purchase orders with big firms for financial and fiscal consulting services on an ass-needed basis. The total contract period would be for three years with no new options to renew. The total cost for the eight contracts for the three-year period will not exceed 1 million dollars. There's no impact to the general fund. There are various funding resources from CRA, which includes tax increment funds, bond proceeds, grant and loan proceeds, program income, and other special revenue funds for reimbursement for the various work done. And the specific funding sources will be identified as the contracts and purchase orders are issued. In the event that the state legislation reduces the available tax increment and other agency resources, this and other commitments may be reevaluated or may be withdrawn.
Mr. President, members, it's clear to most everybody in State of California, that when you're with a 30-plus million dollar deficit, there's gonna be some, or agencies gonna be hurt, and to enter into a contract. I think it's just not the right thing, given the fact that the budget is being considered right now in the state legislature. There's some idea, how much CRA will be impacted by it? I would say that we can pay these guys on a growing basis as needed, extend the existing contract, and wait and see what happens in Sacramento before you initiate another contract. How does that sound to you?
The action before you is not entering into a million-dollar contract.
I know what's happening before you, but you hear what I just said?
I understand, but this is also just a million dollars over three years on an ass-needed basis.
And if you, if the state says you're not gonna get a certain amount of money, then you say you can even cancel the contract, right?
We will not enter into any contracts if we have a funding crisis.
You will not do what?
We will not enter into any contracts if there's a funding crisis for this scenario.
You think if there's a funding crisis, there is a funding crisis, there's gonna be a funding crisis. All I'm trying to do is look you up to look, by saying, continue the existing contracts you have right now, until the state budget is adopted, so you see how much damage is caused by it. If you choose to do that.
The existing contract was also for a three-year period. It was for five companies, five of these companies, five of the original companies are part of this, and the maximum amount, the majority of that maximum, for this, for this three-year period, was 1.4 million dollars.
And you've run out of money already.
And that authority has expired for that contract period.
That's what Bearcrest gets in trouble.
Thank you, Mr. Holden, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On page two of the committee report, I was just wondering, it showed that 170 firms were notified, about 42 were nonprofit minority firms. I was just wondering, how many of the minority nonprofit firms ended up remaining, 14 and then the final eight?
Of the, of the final eight, two of the firms are M.B.E. firms, minority firms.
Okay, which one are they?
It's Catalis.
Catalis.
And Cosmo Partners.
Cosmo Partners. So two of the remaining eight are minority, or any of them community?
So 25% of the firms.
Are any of them also community-based or nonprofits?
No, because it's, what the redevelopment agency does is outreach. The redevelopment agency goes out and outreaches to those firms, and this is a very specialized field of work, so you have specialized firms, a lot of those firms will respond.
So no nonprofits in the final group, minority firms? And what we call a minority is 25% of their staff. And also the principal partners. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Any other colleagues wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please open the roll on the item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That item is approved, colleagues. Next item, please.
I understand, Mr. President.
I understand, Mr. President, item number 53, the other proposal will be, there's a request from the city attempting to continue that matter to tomorrow.
Okay. There's no objection, let's continue that tomorrow.
And this is, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay, now's the time for public comment. See if we have any public speaker cards. Seeing no public speaker cards, Councilmember Miskowski.
Close public comment. The question I had was on item 15, which we were holding it because I thought we were going to get 12. If 12 members aren't back, let's continue item 15 for one day.
Okay, let's close public comment first, colleagues. And seeing not a 12th member back at this point, why don't we continue that item one day?
The council has motions for those to be deferred.
Those are posted and referred?
There are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Gru requests to be excused Wednesday, April 30th to arrive late for personal business, and also Friday, May 2nd for personal business. Those both leave council policy.
All right, council policy, and Miss Gru is excused.
And that clears the desk, Mr. President.
Okay, any announcements, colleagues? Announcements? Mr. Pacheco.
Simply want to announce that budget and finance will start at 2:30.
Okay, budget and finance will begin at 2:30, colleagues. Any other announcements? Colleagues, today is our Day of Remembrance of the Holocaust, our annual Holocaust Remembrance Day. I know many people around the city are marking this sad day with new commemorations. Some of our council members have been doing that today, but council stands united with those remembrances. Any adjourning motions, colleagues? Any adjourning motions at all?
Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call a roll. Thank you very much, colleagues. This meeting is adjourned.